All right, we ready? All right, it's five o'clock. I guess we'll get started. We'll call the Oregon Village Board to order for Monday, March 7th, 2022. Candy, roll call, please.
Here.
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 Peterson.
Here.
Wunch.
Here.
And Switch is indicated he's absent.
Okay. We'll go to three, which is Village Board Meeting Minutes. We'll take A first, which is approval of the February 21st, 2022 Village Board Meeting Minutes. Somebody wants to make a motion in a second. I saw Derek and I saw Mike's hand down there. Got a second. Any discussion? All right, all in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Three B is Candy says we just do acknowledgement and accept the Village Clerk Meeting Minutes for March 4th, 2019, April 8th, 2019, April 15th, 2019, April 16th, 2019, May 6th, 2019, and December 2nd, 2019. So she says we can all approve those, I guess. So Amanda's making a motion? I saw Carlene's hand. Any discussion on those? Those were all in our packets. All right, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. We'll move on to public appearances. For four A is public comment. This part of the agenda allows members of the public to provide information to the Village Board, including items both on and off the agenda. Anybody in the audience would like to speak? Yes. Can you just come up, state your name and your address. Be perfect.
Hi, my name is Bridgette Nettisham, and I'm at 603 Prairie Grass. And my comment today was around item, I think it's seven D. It's relating to a cost agreement with Fleming around the Augusta Apartments. First, I had a question. This this subject got tabled at the Planning Commission, so
Right.
my first question is, is this going forward today?
So the the cost reimbursement agreement that's on the agenda today is just to cover the the cost that Village staff and consultants will spend on the project if and when it moves forward, but no approvals for any of the projects will be on the board tonight, and that is still the kind of community meeting in the future.
Yeah, I think I think there's gonna be a neighborhood meeting soon.
Okay, that was my that was my second question.
And that day doesn't happen, so yet.
What I was wondering is can can we compel or make sure that the addresses from 601 Prairie Grass to 618 Prairie Grass are included along with the Bergamot neighbors as that abuts all of those properties and has a pretty significant impact on those properties as well? So I just wanted to make sure, because neighborhood meetings often have been in the homeowners association for Bergamot in the past and not necessarily including those as they're outside of Bergamot.
Six oh one to six eighteen?
I I believe, yeah, that kind of puts, it's everything from Meadowview Park kind of around the edge, right in that northeast. It butts that northeastern corner that they're suggesting the
Oh, yeah, I know what you're talking about.
It'll definitely be adjacent properties and those within a certain radius, so make sure everyone knows that.
Okay, and then I guess my last comment would be a comment regarding stormwater. The location of that proposal, if you look at the aerial, you'll see a pretty significant eroded stormwater gully right through there. So I just would like a comment made that that ditch behind the park there frequently gets pretty full on bigger rain events. And so I would like some attention paid towards the stormwater when especially that area.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. Anybody else? Okay. Seeing none or hearing none. We'll go to four B, which is Citizen Participation Public Hearing for Habitat for Humanity KI Court Development and Community Development Block Grant. And I think Marcus here will release. We'll have, Mark, if you want to, did I say that right, Mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good evening. My name is Mark Stewart. I'm with Veerbecker Associates, and we have been contracted to write the grant for Habitat for Humanity, and we've been contracted to administer portions of the grant for the project for the village. So as part of the process, a public hearing must be held before any type of project gets underway. And generally, it happens before the application is submitted. But in this case, they're letting us redo our public hearing for this project. There will be another public hearing throughout the project at a later date. We'll probably hold that, you know, next fall, maybe in November. Nothing's going on in November, so. As part of the process, we're supposed to go through CDBG activities, so everybody is aware what's out there and what funding is available. As far as this project goes, the Community Development Block Grant Program is administered by the Wisconsin Department of Administration. They get their funds through HUD at the federal level. But in 2018, the flooding that happened around the state mostly impacted Vernon and Dane Counties. And what the state did is they were able to get funds available, and they created a program called Disaster Recovery. And that Disaster Recovery Program had a round one of funding that the state set aside eighty percent of the funds for Dane and Vernon Counties, and the other twenty percent were available for other counties that were affected, such as like Sauk County, that were affected by the flooding. They had additional monies and some that were left over, and it's approximately fifteen million dollars. And that money was used for a second round of applications, and one hundred percent of that money was to go to Vernon County and Dane County. And so that brings us here today. So Community Development Block Grant dollars are generally used for low to moderate income communities or areas within the state for various projects, and we'll get into some of those categories here. Dane County is actually an entitlement community and doesn't actually qualify for CDBG funds, because they go into a different category for projects. But because this was related specifically to a disaster, it opened up the ability for communities such as Oregon to apply for the funds. So it didn't matter as far as that went. But other communities with, the American Community Survey has determined a level of low to moderate income, and if you're at a fifty-one percent level, your community becomes designated as a low to moderate income community. And Oregon's not one of them, plus it's an entitlement county, so it doesn't qualify. However, in smaller areas of communities that a project may, you know, like a street or sewer and water project in a low-income area, communities can do an income survey to determine if that area in of itself meets the low to moderate income criteria. And we've done that several times for communities, especially if they're very close, or if the area serves specifically, you know, maybe it's a senior housing complex, and you know that they're all on a fixed income, that area, you know, generally qualifies into that low to moderate income area. And then that brings us to the programs that the State Department of Administration takes over through the CDBG Community Development Block Grant Program. They have a housing program that they provide funds for through, to handle owner occupied or renter occupied rehabilitation, new builds, whatnot, large scale, small scale. But those are activities that they handle on on a biannual basis, and then applications are always due in May for a program like that. They also have a Public Facilities for Economic Development Program, and what that does is it's an infrastructure project, but it's tied to an economic development. So let's say you have a manufacturing plant wanting to come into an area, they need, and you need to run sewer and water to the site, but they're gonna guarantee that they're gonna have, you know, twenty jobs that will be paid to low or moderate income, and that this certain wage scale that they will meet. Then for this, for that type of program, the funding is based off of the number of jobs created in that segment. So that's how you determine. In that program, the Public Facilities for Economic Development would be like a fifty-fifty type grant. They also have a Public Facilities, and that's the most common CDBG program in the state, and that's for infrastructure as well, because PF means Public Facilities. And they generally have twelve to fifteen million dollars annually allotted for that. A few years ago, they actually allocated over thirty million dollars to the program. So that funded a lot of projects. And with that, that is generally a sixty-seven percent grant, thirty-three percent community match, and a maximum on that is a million dollar grant. So community facilities, your sewer water, streets, community centers, senior centers, fire stations, libraries, those are all activities that qualify. But once again, it's for low to moderate income areas of a community. Going in line with that is a planning. They do have a planning grant, and generally, a planning grant would be between twenty-five and fifty thousand dollars. Same thing, it's a sixty-seven percent grant, thirty-three percent local match, and that's for planning for projects before you get into the public facilities end of it, or before you get into an economic development aspect of a project, or even before you get into maybe that fire station or community center. You can do a planning process ahead of time. And that's an application that we can, that we apply for. Going back to the public facilities, that's a May application period. Usually, the second week of May is when those applications are due. So if communities need to do an income survey, we generally start that process in the late fall, November, December, because those income surveys are due the beginning of February. They have an emergency assistance program, so within, after a disaster event, a community has ninety days to designate, well, after the disaster is declared, a community has ninety days from that disaster declaration to submit their intent to apply for funds for that. And in 2018, 2019, with all the devastating floods around the southern half of the state, there's a lot of communities that put in a notice of intent to apply for emergency assistance, and, you know, several of them received that. The Disaster Recovery Program, we talked a little bit about that, and we'll talk a little bit more about the project as we get into it. And they also have an Economic Development Program. They generally have about six million dollars available for economic development projects. And once again, that is projects related to working capital, equipment, construction of a facility, such as a manufacturing facility. But that's also tied to a full-time equivalent job. So if someone's gonna create twenty jobs, generally, it's about ten thousand dollars per job. That project could get upwards of two hundred thousand dollars in funding for that project. Maximum grant is five hundred thousand dollars, and that's a fifty-fifty grant to local match. So you can see that with certain programs, if it's focused on economic development, it's in the fifty-fifty category. If it's focused on infrastructure, it's a sixty-seven, thirty-three aspect to that process. So the project at hand for KI Court for Habitat for Humanity, they approached with a project that was to build, take a little area and subdivide it into eight zero lot line lots and to create eight zero lot line units. So that means they would share a common wall. And so through the Disaster Recovery Project, there has to be a trade-off. There was no preset fifty-fifty, sixty-seven, thirty-three aspect to that community development project funding mechanism. It was what's the difference in the feasibility of the project? What's the investment difference? So if a project per unit is gonna cost, let's say, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars per unit, but the developer can only, let's say, afford a hundred thousand per unit, that difference is the fifty thousand. So that's where the grant comes in, is determining what that level of funding would be like. And in this case, the facilities that Habitat is proposing is approximately one point seven million dollars. They have in of itself about one point one million dollars in in match funds. So the request was for just over six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars for Community Development Block Grant, grant dollars. In addition, there's land acquisition dollars, there's sanitary sewer, storm sewer, streets, water, and then engineering and administration go into all match type funds. So when all is said and done, the project total costs were two point six million, two million in match funds, and then six hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars in Community Development Block Grant dollars, and all through the Disaster Recovery Funds. And and that application was actually approved. There's a final few steps that need to be taken place with some signing and whatnot, and getting the documents in, and then the the state will authorize the the program to to move forward. And then the next steps in the process are working with the developer, in this case Habitat for Humanity, to bid out the project and get into the pre-construction activities and then start the process. So with that, I will open it up for any questions.
All right, anybody on the board have questions?
No question. Just to thank you for the explanation for what all these different things are and what they can do. It's be interesting to see if there are some projects down the road that might fit these categories.
Well, unfortunately, we don't ever want to see disasters too often, but the funding does help. And and where it ties in, in this case, Dane County had a lot of funding, and they wanted to tie it back to housing. So the Disaster Recovery was to replace housing that was lost in the various communities or in the various counties. And so in our application process, we identified the number of housing loss in Dane County and what this would do for the that housing, so.
Okay, anybody else? Otherwise, we'll open to citizen input. Anybody in the audience have a question? About the proposal or anything, activities? Okay. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. And Martin, we don't need any action?
No action.
No action needed. Okay, so all right, Mark, so thank you for the presentation. Appreciate it. All right, we'll move on to we'll move on to four C, which is Application for Tax Increment Financing Submitted by Oregon Apartments LLC for construction of a forty-nine unit, three-story apartment building with underground parking at eight eight zero North Main Street. And I think Adam is gonna come up and give us a overview.
Hello, thanks for having me back. So we're looking at the Erfurth, Erfurth Auto Site at eight eighty, eight seventy North Main. And we've put together a proposal for a forty-nine unit apartment building on that site. We think it's a good opportunity to get a, you know, real nice new building on the entry to town, the north entry, so. Hoping that you see that as well. We're going through. Let me get this. Do you want me to read through the whole TIF proposal or the whole?
If you want to.
Generally.
So you want to just kind of give a summary on your project and every unit?
Yeah, so it's forty-nine units. When we put the the dollars together, of course, the costs of construction are pretty tough right now. The site itself would cost more than just your normal vacant site that was ready to go, and just, you know, clear site. So when I come out with the dollars and value, the whole project at a five and a half cap rate, which is a number I got from an appraiser who did the last project we did, and he said that's probably the current cap rate to use in the submarket Oregon here. Our gap is the eight, eight sixty-seven. Now, I I should tell you that the whole thing is actually underwritten, assuming that lumber prices come back towards normal as well at this. So I do need those to come back to something reasonable, and the six hundred dollars per thousand board feet, rather than, I think, right now they're at thirteen hundred, they jump back up again. But the futures don't always match the the actual cash price on the ground either. So what we're hoping to do, we'd hope to get the approvals in place, get all the utilities in place and everything, clear the site. There is a little bit of contamination that we have to clean up on the site. So I'd like to get all that ready and then have everything in place to pull the trailer, so to say, when the lumber prices and the costs get back in. It's hard to predict. I do think that would probably happen again this fall, attract a little bit like it did last year at least. It seems to be doing the same thing a couple of years in a row here. And I guess if you look at the lumber futures trading, it's far from perfect. I think it limits all most days, so. I think there's a lot of reason to believe that we may be caught up. There's a lot of reason to believe we won't, no doubt there with everything going on. But I I think there's a good chance that it would happen. And so that's why we wrote it this way, thinking that if we can get everything to kind of come together this spring, get the buildings cleared, get the contamination cleaned up, and get the utilities all upgraded. We need larger utilities for the apartment building. We'll get through that, and that will probably bring fall just in that process itself. It'd be a real nice building. We've got a lot of brick on it, all hardy plank, so there's no vinyl siding on this. And we've got room in the front for a nice landscaping project. So I think it'd be a nice, a nice feature driving it down.
I think Jeff is gonna pull one up.
Yeah, I'm gonna see if I can pull it up. If I can, just give me a second.
So Adam, while while he's doing this, this is obviously you've met with the staff on this, and I think you've been Plan Commission twice on this as well. So let's, let's see if Jeff can, so we can show other board members kind of what we're looking at here.
That's the site plan. So this is quick trip right down here. This is the Erfurth site. And then this is the Saint Mary's, or Saint Mary's Cemetery, thank you. This is a stormwater pond for Mary Hill back here, and then this is a parking lot back here for the apartments that are on Richards Road. And let me
I'm headed to forward and do the color copy that
Yeah, where is that? Oh, you just sent that to me?
In in the front, we did talk about this, the planning commission. In the front, you see a rectangular shaped patio area, but that will actually be drawn by the landscape architect. So we're hoping to have that a little bit softer. And picturing, you know, a table out there and a fire pit and
Thank you.
something fairly attractive for everybody driving by. And I think that will actually end up doing our advertising for us when people drive by and see something as nice as that. There'll be somewhere that they'll either talk about or or want to be there.
Okay.
We did have a lot of demand in the building. We did behind the hotel. There was a lot of demand, and obviously, with the housing market is, you know, difficult it's been for a buyer. A lot of people moving in there had said, when we gave up, I'd buy the house, at least for now. And so I think it would take some pressure off the housing market. It's obviously not a huge project. But for forty-nine, you know, units of people, I think it would be a relief for them, a very nice relief for them.
How many were the Rosewood Apartments? How many?
Fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven. So those are the ones that are right behind the hotel, the the new hotel motel, whatever, down there on Park Street. Adam did a very nice job. He and his company did a really nice job on them. They had very few problems at all.
All right, let's take some questions from the board. Jerry's got his hand up. Start.
Adam, do you have a, is there an affordable housing component to this project?
We do not. My company manages all of our own, and we don't do the
Do you have estimated rents? Yeah.
Yeah, I do, actually. They would start at nine fifteen is the growing rate on efficiency now. Uh, yeah, I do actually, they would start at nine fifteen is the growing rate on efficiency now. And I think the high end is fifteen ninety-five on a three-bedroom. We're looking at eleven hundreds for a one-bedroom today.
Okay, yeah, Amanda?
One of the things that I noticed about the project, um, I mean, it's right on North Main, which is a kind of commercial area. I like the idea of, of housing being meshed in with that, uh, in that area. Um, I'm wondering if you considered putting any retail space on the bottom that could be converted to apartments if it didn't, you know, uh, get rented within a certain amount of time? That seems to be a, a trend in a lot of other places, I don't know how that would work with your project, but...
It is, is something that we had talked about a couple of times. We, we did struggle with the width of the lot and to park it. And the original plan actually had a parking lot in the front, uh, in front of the building. And we ended up, after some planning commission comments, we ended up eliminating that parking lot to have something, um, a little more desirable to drive past. Um, I do, I would struggle with the ability to park a commercial use with this building size. And if I scaled it back a lot, um, it, the numbers are a long ways off today as it is. So I was not able to do that.
Oh, yeah.
Just a couple other comments about Amanda's question. We talked about this a little bit at planning commission too, that they brought up, um, you know, potential for commercial use. A lot of the commercial users that, um, Elise has been contacting me, they really want to have a drive-through. Uh, that seems to be a high priority and with just the layout of the site here, with it being infill, it's, it's difficult to kind of fit that and make it work. Uh, we've also seen other buildings around town like the, um, Wolf Street Building, that, the multi-story building near headquarters. They did have actually that whole first floor was commercial space when that was built back in the, like, early two thousands. And slowly over time, unfortunately, those commercial spaces, I think there is really the visibility of that building. Didn't end up being a good fit for a lot of, um, businesses. I think TDS would get an office there for a short time. And just last year, they finally made the last two commercial suites into apartments. Uh, but yeah, just speaking of North Main Street and commercial, I think we're really hoping that this project can help spur along with, I know the deals are doing some reinvestment in their building, uh, where the cost cutters have been, but kind of spur some reinvestment in North Main Street. Uh, the Dorn Hardware project has a, a GDP that was approved, I think it's now expired, but it was approved in early twenty-twenty, or twenty-nineteen when the story came on.
Yeah.
That had, you know, multifamily housing above commercial space and a new hardware store. And so we're hopeful that that, the timing will work out with that site as well. And we'll have some more housing up on that side of town. We have the new sidewalk with the construction that was done, uh, last year on that section. And then it's got great walkability to a grocery store, pharmacy, the trails, the rotary trail there. Um, we have a merry home neighborhood. So I think, uh, you know, we'd hopefully like to see the project move forward. Hopefully that we can have, this be a really nice entrance into the village and, yeah, spur some of that reinvestment into North Main Street.
Okay, yeah, Carleen?
So I, I like the idea of the project. I do have a concern about not having affordable housing as part of it and using it, uh, using some of the TIF money because that, I mean, it feels like it's kind of a contradiction. Like this seems like with a market rate, it ought to be able to pay for itself. So I'm just gonna voice that I have that concern that if it doesn't have affordable housing, I'm kind of wondering why we're using TIF money.
Okay. Mike?
Uh, attachment eight, I believe it is, um, you lay out rates of return. And if I'm reading this right, with or without TIF money, you're getting a, a rate of return. It's just with TIF money, um, you have a, clearly a higher rate of return that takes six years for you to reach without TIF, if we didn't give you TIF money, is that correct?
I, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yes, there's, there's a market rate of re- return for taking a risk, yeah.
Attachment eight, it would be page sixty-seven.
Yeah, I'm, I'm on it, I just do...
Um...
Oh, I see where you're looking, sorry.
Second question, I was, actually, I, I make a habit now of sitting in on planning commission meetings. I don't know, I'm a meeting nut. When you had the discussion with the planning commission, I believe it was, uh, December second of last year, um, you, they suggested, you know, more green space in front, which I'm glad that you put up there. Uh, but also told you that according to our village ordinances, um, that you could get by with significantly less parking there, which I don't know if you're guaranteeing an underground spot per apartment, but if we could reduce parking, you might recoup a lot of your added expenses here. Uh, I believe it's five thousand the surface lot and forty thousand for an underground parking stall. If what I was told about the library was correct.
I think that, that is correct. So I think the, the current parking requirement is about one and a half spots per unit.
Correct.
Yeah, so we, I will look at, uh, reducing that the best I can. I do worry a little bit if I go too low, that the people here, if, if they have guests over or if we have any extra cars, they have nowhere to park, uh, 'cause there's no street parking here. But I've been counting the, the parking spots up the street, uh, on Rosewood. And so I will do what I can to get that down to where we think we're, um, it, it's a safe minimum.
Okay.
All right, anybody else? Okay, so I think staff is looking for our recommendation, uh, recommendation to, to the board to proceed with the next step of the village TIF review process by authorizing village staff and consultants to proceed with the negotiation, financial analysis, and preparation of a development agreement relating to the provision of the request. The developer has signed the cost reimbursement agreement as part of the village TIF policy, which would cover the costs associated with this work. So I think we're looking for, we're looking...
So can I just clarify what that means?
Yeah.
So that means doing the BUT four test, correct?
Right, so we'll, we'll talk with Adam and look at developing a, an agreement with him. We'll have elders do the financial analysis to see if, for example, the rate of return is reasonable or not. Um, and then to see what the impact would be financially on the TIF. Um, and so all that information would come back for, for the board to review.
All right, so we'll, we'll get to see this again. So, uh, we're looking for a motion in a second, just to sort of proceed a little, Jerry?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, can we get a second? Derek? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Posed?
No.
No.
Okay. All right, Adam? All right. Adam, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
The cost of the BUT four analysis is covered by the developer, is that correct? Yeah, I'm abstaining.
I'm sorry, I didn't catch that.
He abstained.
I'm abstaining from the vote for right now. I'm, I'm not convinced that the BUT four criteria is met here, but if it's covered by the developer, the analysis, um, let's go ahead.
Okay.
Let me just, I'm just doing the math here, so we have three in favor?
Three, two, one.
Right, so there are, uh, six members present, don't we need four to pass the motion? So the motion is not adopted.
Am I able to speak on that?
Not unless the board lets you, you have to ask these guys.
Is it okay? Yeah, go ahead, Adam.
I wouldn't be paying for the report. So the, the agreement is, has me paying for the different report. And I think you'll be, I think you'll be very surprised at the findings of it. I underwrote this very, very tightly for apartments. I think that you would like the third party opinion significantly. Um, I sincerely took all the meat off the bone on this because I think it's a good project.
Yeah, Elise?
So at this point, there's really no risk to the village, you're not agreeing to give him the TIF funds, you know, the TIF grant is just moving forward, have the elders run through the BUT four analysis. We'll bring that information back, have you review it, and at that point, the board can vote aye or nay on the TIF, uh, grant. So at this point, it's just allowing us to move forward, you're not gonna be paying for it. I think it's usually a, a couple thousand dollars for elders' review, it takes a couple of weeks to do that. Bringing that back to village board meeting later this spring.
Okay.
Now you would need a motion for reconsideration made by someone who didn't vote with the prevailing side in order to consider it again.
I'll make a motion to reconsider.
No, Jerry, you, you were four, Jerry.
It has to be Amanda or me.
Okay.
I'm good with that. I mean, if you're covering the cost of the BUT four, I'm willing to let that go through and look at it again.
Thank you.
So you're moving for reconsideration?
Correct.
Do you need a second?
Second by Amanda?
I don't know.
Because I voted no too, so I can second it, right?
Anyone can second.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, all right, so...
All right, that's fine.
Yes.
The two noes voted to reconsider.
All right, so we have a motion in a second to reconsider, to let it go forward, get the analysis, it'll come back to us, we'll get a final vote.
You're gonna need two votes, this is just to reconsider, and if that's adopted, then the main motion will be before you.
All right, we have a motion and a second to reconsider. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, now the same...
Now the main motion is before you again.
All right, do I have to read it again?
I think we know what it is.
You know, you guys know what it is, right? Okay, so can we get a motion in a second to move this forward?
It's already in front of you, now you just vote. The motion's out there for you.
All right, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay.
So everybody votes yes, right? Are you voting yes, Matt?
Uh, I'll join the crowd, yeah.
Okay, he says yes.
So, no abstentions?
Right.
No abstentions.
Everybody's yes. All right, Adam?
Thank you, thanks for your consideration.
Okay, moving on to four D, Oregon Area Fire EMS District, twenty-twenty-one annual report. See, chief is, Chief Linsmeyer is here. Chief, we had it in our packet, you wanna do some highlights?
Sure, we'll hit some highlights for you tonight. First, thank you for having me, and I guess it's a little different, uh, not having masks on and being able to see people in person and trying to start with the new normal. So again, it's nice to be back and see everybody in person. Uh, since everything is in your packets, again, we're just going to go over, uh, do a summary. I'll give you a summary of what I put and submitted to, uh, Martin and to, uh, Randy and Derek a couple of weeks ago at the, uh, at our fire mission, commission meeting over there. We put some stuff together, that kind of stuff, so we'll see if we can kind of line up the pictures as we go. Who's got the button?
I have the button.
So...
I will try to follow your train of thought.
Excellent, so basically, again, we are, we, we know the fire district, you guys are our largest partner in the fire district. We got three townships and of course, the Village of Oregon. We thank you for that partnership and our continued growth of the organization and that kind of stuff. Going to the next page, basically just some messages from myself, some of the things that we've seen, some of the different highlights of the year. And, and again, for those that are watching us tonight on, uh, cable TV and, and those in the audience, you can go to the, the, uh, website of the fire district, you can pull this stuff up and you can review the, uh, the, uh, the annual report there and take a look at it. If you have any questions, anytime, I'll get ahold of myself or Jess Burger or one of us will be more than happy to, to go over things. But i- in general, I guess, some of the highlights, like I tell the board, I look at the big things and, you know, people are gonna listen to me for probably about five minutes and after that, you're gonna turn me off. So those, after that five minutes, I know it's just lost time. So the things that we want to capture, or I want to capture with you, is basically our continued growth. The continued growth is basically in numbers and responses. And then, and the times our men and women from the fire district are going out and taking care of service, not only in the Village of Oregon, but also in the fire district and all that kind of stuff. And about midway down, you can kind of see that capture is basically, uh, again, about a thousand and, uh, thousand thirty-one calls of EMS. Looking at EMS responses someplace in that Oregon Fire District of that forty-four square miles that we protect. And then last year, we had, uh, uh, five hundred and thirty-six, I believe, five hundred and thirty-six fire calls that we also responded for. And what a fire call basically is, anything from a down wire to a car crash or a smoke alarm or a CO alarm going inside of a house, that kind of stuff, and checking to make sure it's safe for people to inhabit and be able, be able to be there and all that kind of stuff. The biggest thing that I, I continue to tell our, our men and women and also our fire boards over there is our life safety missions at the bottom, our last paragraph of this first page, as I'm, uh, Jeff is trying to keep up with me here. Uh, basically, in a nutshell, again, we like to take care of, we want to prevent the loss of life and we want to control the property. Those are our biggest things that we look at, that are our major items that we want to be able to be successful in, uh, taking care of the fire and EMS business in the district. Now going to the next page.
I'm, I'm ahead of you.
You're way ahead of me.
Well, there, that's where I was before. Am I back here now?
Keep going a little bit more. I got one on here that says personnel, maybe my pages got messed up.
Well, there's personnel here, no, true.
Right there, personnel. So basically here, with personnel and personnel updates, you kind of get, you get a, a snapshot of basically our, our, our men and women that make up the management team over there, that, uh, come out and basically are the leads on the calls and that kind of stuff, uh, the things that happen and all that kind of thing throughout the year. One of the things that I continue to tell our fire district boards is, uh, with our growth and with our turnover in the fire district, and when I say turnover, we had last year, we had like eight different folks that are made up of our paid-on-premise and our paid-on-call folks. These are not our career folks, but these are, these are the old volunteer group that are going to school and doing education and we're utilizing those folks for probably a one-to-three-year window. We had eight of those folks last year that got hired different places and we captured some of the different places that they were at, City of La Crosse and some of the other, uh, area, City of Madison, where people got hired, which are good things for us. We look at ourselves like the B-team basically. They come for here for a short period of time, they run a lot of calls, they do a lot of hours, and then they're gone. Then they send me Christmas cards and all kinds of things and say, hey, we had a couple babies and we, we're getting married and all this other kind of stuff that goes along with it. But that's all part of the fire service and, and the tradition and, and the thon- things that kind of make our operation kind of unique. Uh, but that's kind of where we are. Lot of different places that, you know, when you're doing this changeover, going to career, to the growth and to build out of the fire district and all that kind of stuff, they have a hard time doing that and they really don't like to see that turnover. That's one of the accepted things that I have basically decided that we have to kind of live with. If we don't go that route, is what I'm basically saying, we have to hire more full-time staff. And we gotta make up those people. And you think about the thousands of hours and all that kind of stuff, Lisa can do the math, it, it starts adding up into different budgets. But all of that kind of stuff, these should be proud accomplishments, basically for Oregon, is what I'm saying, not only for this fire dis- district, but all of the partners that are, are part of us, uh, in making this happen. Is that sometimes a lot of work for myself or for, uh, for the managers, the mid-managers? Yes, it is, because we got some of that turnover. And then we get, uh, we get inspection things, maybe dealing with Bonnie or Jerry or somebody else in the district, uh, with different things on fire stuff. And sometimes the communications might not be the same as what the fire chief thinks and all that kind of thing. And we just have this big circle that kind of go around, and we, we deal with those things, we grow, it's growing pains, basically. Moving on, basically, again, going back to this here, this is kind of a snapshot, probably for Jerry. Jerry always looks at these kind of things, budgets and where dollars are and dollars and cents and per capita and all that. We didn't break it down into per capita, but it kind of gives us a snapshot of where we were, uh, the last couple of years, sixteen, seventeen, and some of the other years, kind of sees where we are. We had a little dip in there for COVID, we, uh, you know, we went streamlined as much as we possibly could when, when things were happening with COVID. And then it just gives a snapshot on the bottom of the page of the capital and the capital projects and, and all that kind of stuff that, that's currently laid out there as part of the CIPs and that kind of stuff. The next page is basically, again, a real nice colored graph that, uh, Division Chief Jess Burger likes to put together, a lot of graphs, different ways, different ways of looking at it. Color, uh, blue, of course, is EMS and red is fire, just showing that call volume and things of that nature. Moving on with the EMS and all of that kind of stuff, we always look at how many times that we basically, uh, how many times that we are not available, meaning our primary ambulance is out on a call of our own or helping one of our neighboring communities, uh, whichever direction it wa- may be. The last couple of years, we were looking at in the same ne- neighborhood about sixty-eight calls that we went out and we gave service to like the Stotons or the Brooklands or, or Fitzroona or wherever it may be. And we've used about almost that same number, sixty, sixty-eight, uh, with folks bringing them in from the outside. So just about a trade-off, things of that nature. The thing that we have recognized a while ago, and I continue to tell our board and our different district partners, is what we have to do is we gotta capitalize on those particular calls to try to make up some of that dollars and cents in a revenue, uh, area. Uh, you know, you, you do the math and you think about what ambulance calls are and things of that nature. That's where we have to try to capture that. And that's in a roundabout circle of trying to bring wages up and all the other kind of stuff that happens. Uh, we're doing that slowly and surely and trying to make that number smaller and shrink. Uh, going to the next page, basically our twenty-twenty-one goal, goals, you can kind of see some of the different stuff there. stuff there. We've got some of the, again, the, we talked about the, the reserve ambulance and trying to get more partners in there, taking on more calls. We're continually trying to do the catch-up, I will call it. Are you, all of the district partners have been very generous this last year and have made some commitments in trying to move that hourly wage of ours, which was pretty low, trying to move that forward. And we've got this happening this year, we'll, again, we'll have the next month, next year to get that closer to that fifteen dollar mark category and that area. We're still going to be under, under the gun or under the limit as far as our competitive, larger operations. You take the Sun Prairies and the Middleton's, the Fitch Rona's operations and the Fitchburg operations, we're still going to be underneath that, but we're getting closer to that. And again, it just continues to drive to that. The other thing is, you see, we do quite a bit of different community outreach and stuff of that nature, the picture up there. Even here, the last probably six months or so, we've been trying to get back in the community, trying to get folks to come in and do some things, even with the mask at that time, and just doing certain things, the CCR training, CPR training, doing it out in the bays, but just trying to get people back to coming together and maybe thinking about what we used to do and all that kind of stuff. Moving on, should be Training Division, Jeff? Training Division, there you can kind of see, last year, again, we had eight people basically leave, we brought on sixteen people. Again, currently, we're at about forty-five, forty-six members. Again, there's people out there with applications, different places, those numbers fluctuate and change and all that kind of stuff. You can kind of look at the bottom of the page down there, you can kind of look at the hours, basically, that all the members have done for training this last year in 2021, officer training and different things of that nature. That makes up all of the training that happens. Again, this is different certifications and just a whole gamut of different things. Talk a little bit about our capital purchases, capital purchases this last year in 2021. We had some huge upgrades for the, for the ambulances that we have here. Some of the cots that we had were in the twelve to fifteen years old. They weren't the auto loads where you basically push them up to the back, you got a couple bars out like you have now, it basically lifts them out, takes care of back injuries and all this other kind of stuff. All that stuff has been updated here now, right around January of this year, so all that stuff is up and running. Little different, you know, mechanisms and buttons for people to push and all that kind of thing, but more automated, just safer for the patients and for our men and women and all that kind of stuff. And then just the different stuff with, with the newer cots, we can, you know, handle some weight and that kind of stuff a little bit differently than we had in, in the back of the ambulance before. We can also take care of some of the, some of the other issues that you had with the older cots and when they didn't work, that you actually had to lift them up and get them into locking places if the batteries didn't work and all that kind of thing. So as with anything, when you go from a, from a twelve or fifteen-year-old cot Carleen and you go to something newer with, you got newer lithium batteries and everything else and the auto loads, it just takes care of a lot of different issues that we've had before and that kind of stuff. Can't forget about the next page, Jeff? Moving on with our fire association, the 501(c)(3) operation, they do quite a bit of, they do some fundraising and some different things in the community that you are all aware of. They have been contributing partners to the fire district, they bought some more Zoll defibrillators, that kind of stuff. We've put some car seats in, some of the ambulances to take care of infants and riding along and that kind of stuff. Scrolling down a little bit, Jeff? We've got the Stop the Bleed kits that we'd be more than happy to come here with the village staff or anybody that is viewing us tonight in the business community, work on Stop the Bleed training and that kind of stuff, community projects, be more than happy to help the folks out with that. And then some DODI belts and different things, again, for back injuries, so our people don't throw out their backs and all that other kind of stuff. Going to the last page of the summary of the 2021 annual report, basically our contract events, basically one of our, our largest contract events is the Madison International Speedway. We've got about thirty, probably about thirty-six events out there for Greg and Angie out there, that we have an ambulance dedicated out there on Saturdays and Friday nights. We've done some stuff with the, of course, the kids triathlon here in town, they've been contracting with us and we've got that stuff in place again for August of this next year. We've been doing some stuff with the Easter Farms down towards Stoughton, they've reached out to us that are basically right on the line, they actually are in the Stoughton territory, but that family has reached out to us and take over their special operations for their haunted house and their ten or twelve events out there they have on Friday and Saturday nights in the month of October. And again, they take care of our men and women, both of these contract events, no matter if it's the Speedway to the haunted house, that kind of stuff, for men and women go out there, take care of any of the injuries or any of that stuff, transport if they need to and mitigate the issues that might have at any of these events. And of course, then, the community outreach that everybody in here knows, we just have a, a whole gamut of different things. Again, going back to our life safety initiatives and the different things that we talk about all the time, again, smoke detectors and CO detectors, we're getting there, we probably got, I'm going to say probably about eighty percent saturation in where I'm saying where the systems are not hardwired, that kind of stuff, with the lithium batteries, ten-year smoke detector or the CO monitors, that kind of stuff. We still find some that occasionally, we get an EMS call someplace that will find something or someone that doesn't have one, we'll put some in their house and get them up to where we need. Again, our goal, the commission's goal, is that these folks have these alarms and people are protected. That's our main thing, we do, we want to get people out of the house, we don't want to be the people to pull someone out of the house after the fact. Notification is key. And that's, that's where it is, that kind of stuff. But just a whole different gamut of different things that we have. We've got a 2022 calendar out there that's already, understand from Candy here and from Derek, it's already on the village's website, a bunch of different events and different stuff that we do with training and all that kind of stuff. And where we go from there, Jeff is blowing in, see the pixels are not that good there in that picture. So. One of the things that I would like to basically just kind of like follow up with and, and wrap this up, basically, you know, I had the pleasure to, to talk to the president and, and to the administrator here a couple of weeks ago, basically, and they just pulled me in and asked, Glenn, what do you think the village can do for the fire district and vice versa and all that kind of stuff? And probably the biggest thing that I told them and that I put, put on the radar are a couple of different things. First and foremost is thank you for sharing administrative services with us. And what I mean by that is basically administrative services is basically Lisa taking care of a lot of our payroll, you know, or John or somebody that Lisa basically supervised, but taking care of all that stuff. We've got a contract with the village, you guys take care of all that, you do all of our, all of our federal filings, all of our state filings, all of that stuff. We have no office staff in our operation, the village is contracted to do that. On top of that, you guys take care of all of our bills and all that kind of stuff in a timely fashion. I bring it down and probably the person that's going to miss the village hall not being at this site the most is me. So it's so easy now for me to walk over and just say hi and drop some stuff off in one of the areas, now I'm going to have to travel out a little, out of town a little bit, but we'll make that work. Here and there, the other, the other folks that basically work for us is Peggy, she does a lot of things on the human resources side, all of the onboarding, we got all of that stuff that's happening with new people coming in, all of the benefit packages, all of the information, all of the insurance, all of the emergency contacts, that she's doing all that stuff and billing that all out. Now, we try, we try and we want to make sure you guys are whole on making that happen. I hear very much so by staff that the fire district is using more and more time and more and more time. The discussions that I've had with Randy and both Martin already is basically, if we need more time in future budgets, let us know, we will pay more money because we need to keep this partnership going and this relationship going. And which ultimately means that, you know, the Peggy's of the world or someone equivalent, probably will be more, you know, maybe more, I don't know, fifty percent times the fire district instead of whatever it is now, how many hours it is, somebody here knows what that is. But those are things that are going to definitely impact budgets in the future and also probably, you know, I probably would be a opponent of saying, hey, if Candy needs more employees or more dollars to make this happen, fire district is willing to help that, make that happen. I just want to make sure the board understands all that kind of stuff. The other thing that going back to, again, with Randy and Martin, basically, that I drove home is, the biggest things is a commitment for dollars, paying our men and women and then just personnel, because we're going to have to bring more people on. The more businesses, the more of the buildings, the more of everything we do, it'll just be adding on more staff. And at some point, if we can't recruit and continue the training programs and all the other stuff, we will need to hire more people in doing so. And I think everybody understands that and that's going to come with the dollars and cents and also some, some outlook at that. We're going to take a stab at this, this next year and see where that all is and that kind of stuff. But it's continued growth, continued, you know, good progress for Oregon, don't get me wrong, but at the end of the day, you just have to be aware that those are, that's our, our biggest things. And then of course, of course, is the, what we're going to do in the long term, where the fire district is going to look like, what the Village of Oregon's going to do with growth and annexation and all this other kind of stuff. About, you know, at some point, the more three-story buildings we buy, we got to, we have to put an aerial in. An aerial will not work in that building with backing it in and the door size and everything else, so we're going to have to really do some thinking in that five to seven-year window probably about what we're going to do and how this is all going to work. It's just, again, all growth and all those things, we don't want to be knee-jerk reaction, but we have to think about those things. At the same time, we need the dollars with the growth to pay for it, but we have to also look at the other side of the quarter too. So just to be realistic and all that kind of stuff. Again, the other thing is that we're doing, we're trying to do a lot of different things, Randy and, and the board knows, we're doing a lot of things with grants, doing a lot of grants, we've got a grants committee that's very aggressive, looking at different opportunities to state, federal level and everything else. We've got a bunch of different stuff written right now and we'll see how that goes. And that grant group is pretty meeting a couple of times a, a month right now, trying to make that all happen. But got a lot of different things going, that's kind of a nutshell for 2021. I take any questions that anybody may have it, and if you think of something later, you can always call me or, you know, I'm here just about quite a bit of the time, put it that way. You see the white truck, I'm around.
All right, Mike?
Yeah, I'm glad you brought up about the ladder truck, because I've been thinking about this, so it won't fit in here.
No.
Which means we need a new home for it when you do it, so satellite station, what does that do to your staffing?
Well, anytime you start doing, you start pulling, pulling people apart and you have two different stations, you've got communication issues. And I think that we can all understand that. You can, you can tie them together with electronics that we have this day and age and all that kind of stuff. But as, as anybody, you can go to Fitchburg, you can go to Sun Prairie, you can go to, anybody that's got a couple of stations, you have a, more of a complex situation. And then it's like, where do you set your ambulances and, and all that kind of stuff? So most of the time, they set a couple of ambulances or at least an ambulance in each one and maybe a backup brig in the most, most busiest station. And then at that time, depending on where the large structures are and the sleeping quarters for everyone, they'll stick a aerial ladder with that at that particular point and send a crew from that particular station out to be able to deliver it. Complex things, can we get over those complex things? Most definitely, Mike, it's just a matter of growth and communication.
So does that inherently mean you, at that point, you need more staff?
Most definitely. Yes, you're doing the math and you're thinking about it, you start bringing it out. Ideally, and again, you think about the state of readiness and, and things of that nature, what that really looks like. And in an idealistic world and you start building it out, if you compare us to a City of Madison, you have an engine companies of three, ladder companies of three or four, and they're dedicated individuals. Here, on any given one day, we don't have those kind of numbers. We have like two full-time people that are basically here and we have some volunteer people that are here on paid on call or paid on premise, and then we have some interns that'll make that up. So out of that whole mix, that, that varies from basically two to five different people and then a whole bunch of different people on pager time from the outside that basically change their job, change their direction and come in when you, when they're needed. And those people are dedicated to doing what they need to do. And that's why it's so important to get that hourly wage up and some of this other stuff and continue to do that and to continue to build that out. So, yes, you're, you're a very smart guy, you understand exactly, you see the same picture on the wall that I see. So, in a lot of, in a lot of ways, it's trying to incorporate and utilize, probably keep it into a single station as much as possible. And then you think about the different things. You know, our district board knows that we, we've talked to some others, just a little bit, very minor, just about consolidation and consolidated efforts with our neighbors around and how that would look and where that's going to be five years or 10 years out. And there's a lot of people that have a lot of pride and a lot of ownership in their communities that don't want to change some of that stuff right at this point. But at the same time, when their numbers and their demographics start to change and they can't find people, they're going to have to start changing and thinking about different options. So again, you have time on your factor a little bit there and all these different, different things that happen. But again, what I'm trying to do as your fire chief and as administrator of the district is basically put this stuff out there, make sure you're aware of it, make sure you hear it from me, make sure we have these discussions. I don't necessarily have a good answer today or tomorrow, but I figure collectively and working through all of our district and our different partners, we'll get there when we need to and have a good plan moving forward.
So now that this building's becoming vacant, could we add another stall for a ladder truck and keep your costs down and?
I don't know.
Expand your existing station?
I think that possibility is there, depending on what, and don't take this wrong by any means, I don't, if they're, depending on how much of this building is left and that kind of stuff, I think if this building was not here, I think you could probably do something very much so tight on that twenty-year building over there to make that fire operation work.
And that would reduce your ongoing costs because you'd have less staff?
Correct.
Okay.
The other thing that we've done and the board knows this, is I've been trying to tie solar into that fire station as bad as I possibly can and as fast as I can. I personally have it at my house, I see how it works. I've got a nice big grid on it on the south side of my house. Month of February, my house was a hundred dollars positive and it took care of all my utility bills, to kind of give you an idea. We need to look at that stuff very much so and tie it in with our buildings, that's my two cents. This last month, what did we have, about thirty-six hundred dollars, I think, Lisa are real close to utilities in the fire district when it was pretty cold, thirty-five seventy-eight or something like that, Derek?
Yeah.
So I mean, those are the things that we really need to, or geothermal, bringing up, using air conditioning and using the water to get you up to fifty-five degrees, using that to offset your electric in the summertime, other than pumps, basically. There's different, there's different things out there, we need to look at what the school district did, Fitchburg did some things in the fire station, but any of that stuff, when we start upgrading and looking for that stuff, we need to be very proactive. My thoughts, and my thoughts only.
All right, who else? Derek, you have something?
No, I'm kind of going back to the chief's staffing and just for my colleagues on the board here, can you let us know again what the starting wage for the paid-on-call, paid-on-premise people is?
Paid-on-call, paid-on-premise people right now, we went from seven fifty, right now I think we're up to ten twenty-five. And that's for new people with no certifications and that kind of stuff. Once they get their certifications, once we put them on the ambulance and we start running and all that kind of stuff, now they're up to like thirteen twenty-five and that kind of stuff. And Lisa and I knew where these numbers were and all that kind of stuff. We did a lot of movement this last year, but not the total movement. And we knew that when we did the last budget, Lisa and I both were aware of those numbers. So again, moving, moving things take little at a time and not huge adjustments, we get that and, you know, fortunately, we got a bunch of men and women that stick with us And, uh, you know, fortunately, we got a bunch of men and women that, uh, stick with us and do the job and are here for me and, um, help our operations.
Okay. Anybody else? Yeah, Amanda?
Um, I'm wondering if you offer, um, classes, like the Stop the Bleed thing, to the general public?
Most definitely.
Do you? Okay.
Yep, yep. There's a couple different things that are going on. I know we're gonna do some Safety Saturday stuff here with the police department in a couple of weeks. Uh, basically, I think it's the first week in Sa- in May, I believe, Jenny, right? Uh, we're gonna have the street out here, I believe, closed and that kinda stuff. We'll offer some stuff there. We'll make sure the general public knows that, that that's going on, that kinda stuff. And then this year, the, uh, the chamber, uh, also asked us to do some safeties, uh, Safety Thursday night things that are gonna be tied in with opening night of, uh, um, of Summer Fest. From my understanding, I believe the fireworks they wanna have on Thursday night. So, they want us to do some things. We're gonna do some fire extinguisher demos and some different stuff, trying to get some fire extinguishers and some different stuff in people's hands that don't normally, uh, see that kinda thing. Uh, and again, you never know where that one person might be to be able to put that fire out before something turns into larger. But, uh, most definitely, anytime, uh, that kinda stuff will offer to any of the community. We'll keep that open. But thank you.
Anybody else? Derek, you have something else? Okay.
All right, chief, well, thanks for the, the great sum- oh, Jennifer.
Can we just acknowledge, too, that chief just got, um, the Chamber President's Award this year? Um, so that's quite the accomplishment, so I just wanna recognize that.
Yes. Very good, chief. All right. Chief, thanks very much. Okay, let's, uh, move on to number five, which is, uh, proclamations and announcements. Five A is in our packet. We have the upcoming meetings and events to get in our calendars. Uh, we can go to six, report of village officers. Uh, six A is village administrator, Martin's report. Couple pages. Anybody have any questions for Martin on his report? Not seen any, okay. Six B is the police chief report, uh, January activities, alcohol compliance checks. Chief Ankauf, do you wanna ask?
Yeah, uh, just to cover the activity report, I did notice there was an error in the subject line. It's January of 2022.
Okay.
Um, to make that more current, but just to highlight a few contacts we had. January eighth, uh, about eleven twenty-three PM, our officers were out conducting a traffic stop. Vehicle was traveling forty-seven miles per hour and twenty-five on North Main, northbound. The officers ended up finding some marijuana and, uh, obviously dealt with the driver and occupants appropriately. But during the traffic stop, there were several McDonald's employees that were essentially hanging out of the drive-through window, harassing the officers. And it got so bad that the, um, occupants of the vehicle they had stopped was, were actually asking the officer to tell those employees to stop. I will say the McDonald's management was very, uh, nice to work with and helped us, uh, correct that behavior. Then, uh, the very next day, about three fifty-six PM, our officers responded to QuickTrip Central for an individual who exposed themselves to a cashier. Our, uh, staff did a good job investigating it. Were able to identify the person after the fact. And, uh, obviously, now that case has been forwarded to the DA's office for charge, a charge of lewd and lascivious behavior. To highlight just some of the numbers here for January 2022 in comparison to 21, uh, we doubled again in domestic disputes. Saw quite the spike in juvenile calls disturbances. Uh, we had this year eight versus three last year for the month. And, uh, what also struck me as pretty concerning was, uh, sexual assault child incidents. We had five in 2022 for the entire month of January versus zero the year prior, too. Just noteworthy, the meetings, um, obviously, the Wiley Egg Accreditation Training Committee, I've been asked to join and, and participating in. Also participated in a meeting in January between the law enforcement and Leaders of Color Collaboration and the Dane County Chiefs of Police Association, uh, for a strategic planning session. And it actually went quite well. For our staff, uh, we did post some educational information on our OPD Facebook about internet safety. And we've hired, uh, opened a hiring process to hire one police officer. Just to give us, to give you an idea of what our current staffing is right now, uh, we're technically six short on the road. We currently have one in the police academy, and, uh, he's doing well, but he's expected to complete the academy in roughly September, so it's gonna be a wait. Uh, we have one in the field training program, so he doesn't count as that extra officer yet. We currently have two on what I would consider leave at this point. Uh, as you see, we're hiring one, and we recently had one notify me that he is resigning to go into the civilian work. So, so that's that, and, uh, I'd be happy to go through the alcohol compliance checks at this point. I see that's included with this agenda item.
Can I ask a question really quickly? So, normally, how many officers does the Oregon Police Department have? And how many, how many down from that? I mean, you said you're six down, but how many are, would there normally be, period?
Yeah, there'd be twenty sworn. So, to have six short, uh, that certainly, uh, creates stress on staff. You know, it's just like any other place of business. You only have a select amount of individuals that like to pick up that overtime. So, you know, we, we have, we respond to pretty high-stress calls. And as you can see at the, uh, on that list of call sheet, we're, again, up calls for service. You know, from, you know, six ninety for the month of January in 2021 to, in 2022, seven ninety-six. So, we're constantly seeing this, this uptick. And like, like you saw, domestics, that's not your one-off sir call. You show up, there's no stress to it. These are high-stress calls until we can make them safe. And even after that, sometimes people are uncooperative. I can tell you, for the, the traffic stop where the McDonald's employees were, were getting involved, that's, that's high stress. It's not only are you trying to keep a traffic stop safe, but then you're having to worry about what's behind you, and then additional officers have to respond. So, uh, our staff has done a phenomenal job of picking up overtime so that we can try to have adequate staffing to handle this, this sort of call volume and these sort of calls at a more regular basis. But it's not sustainable whatsoever. Um, so I, I'm, we have that as a topic later, and I'm certainly planning on talking about that more.
Thank you.
To discuss the alcohol compliance checks, so we did do a round of these. I guess just to give you a little bit of backstory, these are hard to do, uh, for, for our police department, like it is any other police department. There, you, you won't find too many people that are willing to volunteer their personal time at a young age to come in and try to buy alcohol. It's, it's not fun, and it, it certainly makes it for an uncomfortable situation when the person who violates that law is there, we're dealing with that, and this person who just tried buying alcohol for us, um, is kind of there witnessing it. So, uh, I can't comment enough as to how appreciative we are of those volunteers, but they're not easy to find, so it takes time. Uh, and then when we have the pandemic, that certainly creates, that's a challenge. So, the, the three businesses we had violate this round, which occurred on January eighth, was Pizza Pit, Main Tap, and QuickTrip. So, for, for Pizza Pit, um, the supervisor who conducted the checks noted that the clerk appeared to misread the ID. And the clerk had recently moved from Alaska and was unfamiliar with Wisconsin IDs. If you look at an ID, it, Wisconsin makes it super clear as to, like, what's around the photo. It'll say, has not attained the age of twenty-one. It's very clear. But also, you know, we, we work with our local businesses to, um, educate them on making sure they get, you know, their staff trained on how to read certain driver's licenses. It appears the same relatively, uh, explanation from Main Tap, misread ID, thought, uh, the U twenty-one in the upper-left meant buyer was twenty-one. Uh, LaRocas was the, the third violator, and the notes are, that the ID was not checked. Wait, uh, waitress was different than person actually serving. So, we've had that happen before where the server is under, or the waitress is underage, so the person who has the ability, because of age, will authorize the sale. Ultimately, the person who authorizes that sale, who is of age making that decision, uh, we hold responsibility. So, um, with that said, uh, I, I assumed the quest, next question would be, well, what's the history with each of these businesses? So, I looked at the, the last three checks we've done with each business. So, with Pizza Pit, um, June fourth of, um, I'll start from the latest. Uh, so, June twenty-fifth of 2019, they passed. February eighth of 2020, they passed. And June fourth of 2021, they passed. So, for the last three checks, they have passed. I'll then go to LaRocas. Um, June twenty-fifth of 2019, they passed. February eighth of 2020, they failed. The person who sold did not, was not wearing their glasses, and that's the reason they gave the explanation. Uh, June fourth of 2021, they passed. Main Tap, I, I've saved last for a reason. So, June twenty-fifth of 2019, they failed. Uh, and simply the employee never carded, the individual. Uh, February eighth, 2020, again, Main Tap failed, and they thought the, uh, buyer looked old enough. That was the explanation. And then lastly, June fourth of 2021, Main Tap passed. Um, our, our typical, and, and, um, Matt may be able to speak further to this. Um, I believe our typical, um, rule of thumb is, uh, two violations within a year, and this matter comes back in front of the board.
That's been the practice for the board to discuss what you'd like to do next. And, at least for a number of years, the board has asked the owner to, to meet with the board to talk about what the situation is and try and work towards improvement.
I think we've, we've had Main Tap before us. Maybe the last time we had some folks before us.
Yep, we, we have. Um, if we're going by what, what the practices, though, this would not fall within that realm. I, I will say, um, there was a business, not any of this, that has struggled in the past. Uh, the village board allowed me to work with, uh, Oregon Cares to find a solution. And knock on wood, that solution has worked. Um, they're not on this list today. So, what I would ask, if, if the village board is open to it, is we'll have our liquor liaison work with Main Tap to try to identify a good solution, and then see what the next check brings.
We all agree? It's a good idea?
Seems like this is successful.
We got nods. Chief?
Just briefly, I, I think it's worth probably asking, I, I assume, that in all cases where there's been a failure, the person who served inappropriately was cited, right? So, that happens in, in every case. Then the night, what, the more complicated question is, if there's a pattern that emerges, how does the village wanna respond to that?
So, so, chief, the, um, Main Tap has two times in a row fail, or just once?
Um, so, they did it twice in a row, uh, then the most recent, they passed, and then this time, they failed again.
Okay.
So, out of the three that have failed this round, they certainly have more failures than, um, passes.
And I do remember the last time they came before us, they were, the, the daughters had just taken over the, this has been a couple of years, had just taken over the, the business from their dad.
Yep.
But I saw nods in, in terms of having the chief work. Yeah, Derek?
I just, uh, would have, I guess, one request to kinda go along with that. Can we have that liquor liaison track how many hours he's spending doing that?
Doing?
Just reviewing with Main Tap their practices and how to resolve these issues?
We don't typically track amount of time. We do track how many meetings we have with them, and then they know how those meetings went and if there was any, um...
That's fine. I, I just, because I kinda remember one of the previous ones, ones that you did, and I kinda wondered how much time staff was devoting to private businesses' practices.
Yeah, I would, I would, uh, say it's, each meeting would probably be between twenty minutes to forty-five minutes average, whether, regardless of whatever business it is, 'cause we typically also remind them of where they can find information. We go over how to look at a driver's license. Um, I will say this, not on selling alcohol in particular, but, you know, also something to take into consideration. Honestly, I thought there would be more failures. We've had a lot of turnover at a lot of businesses. These places are no different. Um, so I think it would be interesting for our liaison to get in there and kinda get through the layers of what's going on. And we can certainly track how many times we're meeting with these businesses. I mean, we have been anyway.
Yeah, or chief, could you, could you at some future village board, give us an update on, on how that, working with them is going? I think we would, might be interested in that, but Amanda had her hand up, and then Derek.
Yeah, I noticed in, uh, one of the businesses that had failed previously, it has used ID scanner in there, because they, they passed because they scanned the ID. Is that correct?
Yeah.
So, that works.
Yes, that was the...
I love that idea.
Yeah, Oregon Cares has been phenomenal to work with, Cynthia and Amy. They were the ones that helped us, um, find the solution. And so, basically, Oregon Cares is loaning this to this business. Obviously, there's, there's a couple dynamics there. We, we have some language barrier there, but just, they're busy, just like a lot of businesses, and it's been a great solution. So, yeah, I agree. It was great to see that.
And I think, chief, that was one of the suggestions that we had given them, too, when they came before us. So, Derek?
I wonder if there's funding for more of those.
Yeah.
We could certainly go down that road.
Yeah. Yeah, Derek. You're, you're okay? Okay. Anybody else? Yeah?
I just wanna say from the clerk's office that Jenny has put in, like, a good, um, system for the liquor liaison, and I wanna thank her for that, 'cause it helps us in the office as well.
Yes.
When we're hitting up the information, the operator's licenses, and telling people that they have to get that, and their officers do a good job following that up. So, I appreciate that.
Yep. Good.
One, one thing that I do wanna say is, um, Dan Donahue from the Chocolate Keeper and Kickback Cafe contacted me, and he just wants to make clear that Kickback, on the report, I think the Kickbacks Cafe says that they're no longer selling alcohol. And that's not true. Um, they are selling alcohol. They just weren't at the time. They do have a glassy combo at that location. Um, as far as the Chocolate Keeper goes, he is thinking about, um, maybe not renewing that license. And maybe that's where some of the confusion is, but he just wanted me to clarify that for everyone.
Okay. All right. So, any, any other questions? The chief's went over a lot of stuff tonight. Any other questions for her? Carleen?
My question is, do we need a motion to authorize that this solution or not, or this attempt?
Uh, you don't need one, uh, unless the chief, uh, believes that she needs that direction, but...
I just question.
I think no action would be probably viewed as an endorsement of her suggested approach.
Perfect.
There were a lot of shaking heads, so that's good. Okay, all right. Chief, thank you. Okay, uh, next is six C, invitation from the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, CARPSY, for Plan, Plan Commission and elected officials to serve on CARPSY's 2022 ad hoc committee on the proactive planning to implement the regional development framework. Elise, you probably have this memorized, give the Plan Commission. Do you wanna just give a quick?
Sure. Uh, I'm not sure if we actually did bring, uh, the, the last couple of years, CARPSY, the Capital Area Regional Planning Commission, they've worked on a regional development framework which looks out, I think, sort of as a thirty-to-fifty-year timeframe on where development is expected to go in the county, uh, where transportation investments, uh, should happen, where natural areas should try to be preserved, things like that. So, I was part of that working group that worked on it the last couple of years, and then they came and presented to Planning Commission, I think maybe last fall. Um, so at this point, they're moving forward with sort of planning for implementation, and I got an email from their director just that they are looking for involvement from planning commissioners or board members, uh, elected officials who might like to serve on a ad hoc committee for implementing this plan. It's a good chance to learn about regional planning efforts and meet other, um, officials from other communities. If you're interested in kind of long-range planning on a county-wide scale, this would be a good opportunity. So, if you're interested, uh, I can let you know more about all of the information required beyond that committee. Uh, should be available if you have it.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Elise. Okay, uh, let's go to six D, Village Department Head, Staff and Consultant Comments. I know Rachel's got something.
Yeah, I was just gonna mention that even though Dane County's, um, mask mandate expired at the beginning of March, there is still a mask mandate in place at the senior center under the policy that we have. Um, and that will remain in all likelihood in effect until the Wisconsin Department of Health Services drops the county, um, COVID rate from high down to, um, substantial. And it is, they do not update their website as rapidly as Dane County's dashboard does, so there might be a bit of a lag. But we're just gonna continue with that mask mandate until we reach something less than a high level in the county.
Okay, thank you. Any other Village Department Head or Staff?
Randy?
Yeah, all right.
So, I just wanna share with the board that we hosted the election training at the new building last week, and we had over sixty people in attendance. And it was super exciting to use the new building, and I wanted to stay there, but... Use the new building, and everyone bought it, so...
All right, great. Good. Okay. All right, let's move on to six E, Village Board Comments. Anybody have anything? Seen any hands? Yeah, Carleen?
So, I sent something this afternoon. Uh, there was a request to, uh, next, in, at the next meeting, have, uh, the Friends of the Oregon Sculpture Garden make a presentation. And I think there's, that, uh, two forty-nine North Main is already on the agenda for that, for that meeting. Is that correct?
That was my plan, but I saw your email, too.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have to be here, but I won't be here. I'm gonna be on vacation. Um, Matt's got, you know, approved last week, and there's a good time to take off. So, um, I just wanted to, to say, I think that's a good idea to have that conversation at the same time. If, and it, I mean, certainly, I don't have to be here for that conversation, but if, if everybody else is okay with that, April eleventh would be better for me. Are you, 'cause the conversation about two forty-nine North was your...
I don't even know if I'm gonna be on this board on April eleventh. I...
You will be.
You will be.
Yeah, swearing in isn't until later. You'd still be on the board. Is that okay with you, Jerry?
I'll be here.
Okay, and I'll be back.
All right.
Perfect. Thank you.
We'll plan for that.
Okay, anybody else? All right, we'll go to 7. Communication miscellaneous business, items are for discussion, possible action. 7A is approval of vouchers in the amount of $3,327,399.90. I'll take a motion in a second, they get it on the table, and then we can have questions. All right, Amanda, and Mike, okay, questions? Mike's got some.
Yeah, when I first saw that number, I thought we slipped a decimal.
I know, that's a big one.
So, a question I have, let me pull this up here. Item number 13148, which I think is the credit cards. We had a bunch of fraudulent charges, is our credit card generally out there, or?
It actually happened at the PD, so what happens is, and it's happened, I know to Jeff a couple of times, somebody just steals our information and starts using our cards, just like they would your personal card. People can tap into ours too. So it wasn't that the card was lost or anything, it's just that somebody hacked in and got the information. The card has, as soon as we were made aware of it, they contact us. We stopped, we closed that account on that card, and then the one was reissued. I mean, this isn't the first time it's happened.
Okay.
It's always reimbursed.
Yeah, they, they credit us back for the charges.
There's three charges under the same account for system, Public Works Director, Oregon's River, those are ads?
Advertisements for the job openings, yes.
Yes. And then, page later, there's double entries for lease of a postage machine? Is that?
What page are you on?
Right here.
I believe that's page 118.
117.
Same charge on, yeah, page eight of the voucher, or six of the vouchers, Lisa.
Lisa, I can relate that way.
Oh, okay.
I think what happened was, one of the bills from, we pay that on a quarterly basis, and one of the bills from the last quarter of 2020 wasn't paid, so we paid, we paid for the first quarter in the fourth quarter of last year at the same time.
Okay, thank you.
All right, anybody else? Yeah, Jerry?
Yes, probably a question for Jeff, vendor 513.
Okay.
There's a self-propelled saw for five grand there, is that a replacement, or is that a new piece of equipment?
That was a, that's a concrete saw that we ordered last September. That was approved by the Village Board back then, under equipment. We sold the old one as surplus, got some money back for that, but that was for a walk behind concrete saw that we use for asphalt and concrete cutting for repairs and other things.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we got a motion in a second. Candy, you want to take a voice vote, please?
Elo?
Yes.
Wunsch?
Yes.
Peterson?
Yes.
Lish?
Yes.
Bali?
Yes.
Imesha?
Yes.
Okay. All right, 7B, authorize, authorizing conflict waiver for Village Attorney to review the 2022 fire in EMS District, contract updates, the staff recommendation, the motion is to approve. Somebody wants, Matt?
I can just briefly tell you what this is about. Martin sent to me the revisions to the firing EMS District agreement, the intergovernmental agreement, and asked me to take a look at them, and I recognized, a little late in the process, that the Town of Dunn is a member to that, and one of my colleagues, Chris Hughes, works with the Town of Dunn, views them as a client. He does a lot of, actually, conservation-related work with them. So, because that's a current client of the firm, I can't review that agreement on your behalf without your consent to, to, to me doing that, knowing that one of my colleagues also represents the Town of Dunn. We will not be reviewing this agreement for the Town of Dunn. They have not asked us to, and my colleague Chris has talked to the Town of Dunn. They have no objection to us doing this review on behalf of the village.
Okay. All right, so we're looking for a motion in a second to approve. Carleen and Amanda, any other discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. 7C is discontinuance of a portion of Oregon Parks Avenue, and it looks like Martin, I need to open a public hearing for this, if anybody's in the public wants to speak on this, or do you want to, do you want to give a little brief? And I don't think there's anybody here to speak on it, but we can.
Go for it.
Sure, so, we've seen a couple of different meetings, a few iterations of some duplexes over in Oregon Parks neighborhood. This is just north of Beehive, just north of Omni Properties. There's three lots right now that will be subdivided into duplex lots, I think a total of 11 lots now. There's a small portion of right-of-way there that's shown with the hash mark. That's currently a bump out for on-street parking. That area will be where driveways for two duplexes will be exiting. That's not space that's really being used right now, and so the developers ask that we vacate that right-of-way. They'll be rebuilding the sidewalks, treating it out there, rather than have it kind of bump in and out for that on-street parking. So, just the process to vacate right-of-way is a little tedious. I think we introduced this back in January, did a couple of public hearings at Planning Commission last week, and this is the final step before it gets recorded.
Okay. All right, anybody from the public that would like to speak on this, we still are open? I've not seen any, well, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll go to 2, which is Resolution Number 2201, Resolution to discontinue a portion of Oregon Parks Avenue adjacent to Lot 53 in the Oregon Parks neighborhood in the Village of Oregon. I'll take a motion in a second to approve that. Carleen and Amanda, any other discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. All right, we're on to 7D is a cost reimbursement agreement between Fleming Development, the Village of Oregon, for proposed residential development on the corner of Augusta Drive and Bergamont Boulevard. Staff recommendation is to approve, this is just the, the agreement between the developer and the village, and Elise alluded to this earlier. So, it's just a formal agreement that we have, just making sure that we get reimbursed for staff time and such. So, if we can, somebody want to make a motion in a second? Look at this, Derek and Amanda, any discussion or questions? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we'll go to E, which is lease agreement between the Village of Oregon and DAJK LLC for public recreational uses at 102 Alpine Parkway. Staff recommendation is to approve, and I think, Martin, we did this last year.
Correct?
Yep.
Yeah. Does anybody, somebody want to just say it's just?
Sure, so this is 102 Alpine Parkway, the site that was hooked up for the Great Dane a little bit last year, right north of Miller Benzel. So, Dan Bertler's been gracious enough to lease this property to us for valor each year. Last year, it wasn't actually used by any sports organizations, there wasn't a need, and there was kind of a lack of awareness this was available, but now that JC Park will likely be, you know, off the grid for the year during construction, there's need to have playing fields, you know, other playing fields used around Feller. So I think this will get used this year, probably by some of the smaller kids, the smaller fields kind of fit better there, but we're grateful to him for the use of the space temporarily.
Yeah, that's nice of Dan Bertler to open this up. So, we can have a motion in a second. Derek and Mike, any discussion on this? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. F, master services agreement between Computer Magic Incorporated and Village of Oregon for informational technology services. Who would like to? I see this is needed, so we don't, am I correct? We don't, there's, there wouldn't be a 20% increase, is that correct?
Yeah, Computer Magic had presented to us that Microsoft has some of their services that are increasing in price, and getting this locked in now would help us avoid some of those increases.
Okay. So we'll look for a motion in a second. Mike, you got a question, Mike, or you're making a motion?
Well, I'll do the motion.
All right, let's do the motion, Mike, and then Carleen. All right, discussion, Mike.
So, I read through this agreement, I didn't see anything in here about the 20% within the agreement. Is, is that the only change that was in here?
So, as I understand it, the village worked on this agreement two years ago, roughly, but it never actually got done and approved. And so, this issue prompted Computer Magic to be like, you know, are we going to have this agreement approved or not? It was reviewed, it was pretty much at the finish line, it just never got over. And so, we just took this as an opportunity to lock in what they're requesting, plus lock in our actual services agreement with Computer Magic.
Candy, are they handling backups for us? Because I noticed there was an exclusion in here for cloud backup.
Yes.
They are handling that, okay.
And just to piggyback on Martin, I know we spent considerable time, I know that our attorney reviewed the agreement from Computer Magic, I just don't show it ever being officially approved.
Well, it would have been probably Laura Callen in my office who looked at this, and it's been so long now, I don't really remember exactly where we landed.
At least a couple of years ago, but I don't, I know that she reviewed it, and she may be okay with it.
Yeah, I found Mike Grace's emails on it, that it was pretty much at the finish line, and.
And it just was never officially approved yet.
Okay, any other discussion? All right, we got a motion in a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, okay. We're on to G, review of JC Park redevelopment project bids. Staff recommendation, the motion is to reject the bids and return the bid bonds for JC Park Contract A. General site construction for the bids opened February 17th, 2022, and direct staff to advertise and rebid Contract A of the project. So, Jeff, I suppose, will turn this over to you.
Yeah, you want a motion in a second?
We can do that. Carleen's making a motion, and Mike's second, okay?
Okay, great. Yeah, so, we did open bids for the project. We had, I think, five bids under the Contract B, but we had three bids under Contract A. The apparent little bidder in A was MICE construction with a bid of $3.165 million and change. Speedway Sand and Gravel had a bid of $3.25 million and change, and Pre-C construction was at $3.658, almost $3.659 million. Following the bid, our engineers go through and line item review of every bid item, and when we were looking through the bids, we saw immediately that there was a discrepancy that we noticed on line 78 of the bid tabulation, and we've included that for your records there. Line 78 was the dugout roof structures. Just as an FYI, this is, this is what is specified in our contracts for the dugout roof structures. Basically, holes, frames, metal roof. Here's another one that's a little fancier, same type of structure, you can see holes, fencing, and a metal roof. And we had three prices, or under the unit pricing, MICE construction was shown at $564,000. Speedway Sand Gravel was shown at 70, almost $78,000, and Pre-C construction was at $62,000, almost. Obviously, this is a major discrepancy in the bid for the unit prices for these items, because unit price is to reflect the, the work and the materials under that unit price. We did talk to MICE construction. They acknowledged that the cost to construct the dugouts did not cost $564,000. However, they indicated that they have other costs built into that line item, and I'd be happy to go into those, but it involved almost $310,000 in utility work, which there are no utilities with these, $80-some thousand, I believe, with $85,000 in topsoil. The dugout buildings were $115,000, and job supervision of $52,500. When I did some research into this, because this is not something that I've come across when you go through a unit price bid, it's not uncommon, obviously, they're bidding their prices of how, how they think they can do it for what prices for each of those units. And it's not uncommon, you see one that's high, one that's low, and everything like that. And usually, they're within what I would call a margin of understanding. When we saw something like this, that really jumped out at us, and so I did some research, and I came up, and I found out that this is termed a mathematically unbalanced bid. And what that means is a mathematically unbalanced bid is one containing a lump sum, or in this case, like a unit bid item which do not reflect reasonable actual costs plus a reasonable proportionate share of the bidder's anticipated profit, overhead costs, and other indirect costs which he or she anticipates for the performance of the item in question. I did do a little research to just pull up the specs, go to the websites of the two, two, that are, two providers that are architect-led specified. I found those right-of-way online, I could order them today for $11,172. That's just order price, it's not delivered price. So it would come up, materials, almost about $67,000 for the six dugout structures, and that is in line with what we see in the other two bids. I do not believe it's reasonable to declare, I do believe that it's reasonable to declare that MICE construction is mathematically, their bid is mathematically unbalanced. You know, someone would say, well, what does it matter? An unbalanced bid could lead to negative consequences for the village. In other words, you're paying for items that may or may not have been done on the project at that time, and because of that, we just did not feel comfortable bringing a recommendation to the board that would say, we approve this, and we have nothing. I mean, it's not that we doubt MICE construction can do the project, but we do question what was going on with that. I still think it's extremely, extremely high for that bid item. So considering that, and the uncertainty of this situation, we spoke with our attorney, we spoke with Martin, considerable length about this, as well as with our architects, and it's just come to our staff recommendation that we reject all three bids, and for Contract A, and go out to bid a second time. If this is the case, if this is approved by you today, that would mean that we'd advertise this Thursday and the following week, and do a public bid opening again on March 24th. There's no guarantee when you go out to bid that you're going to get lower prices. I know that MICE construction is frustrated with this, and I understand, but this is a very large contract for the village. We've not had this large of contract with the village in a very long time. So that's why I say I think we should proceed methodically. I believe, Dan, or is that you, okay, Dan MICE is here, he did want, he did ask that he'd be allowed to speak on this. But as far as staff recommendations, we will be bringing back Contract B, the site electrical. We feel we have a good bid there for that, and we have 60 days to approve that bid, so we are well within that timeframe still, and we'll be bringing back that recommendation for you at a later date. You can see our recommended motion, I'd welcome any questions from you before you hear from Mr. MICE.
Yeah, Amanda, and then Carleen?
I'm just wondering what our policy is with bids. Are we obligated to take the lowest bid when we put something out for bids? Or could we just go to the next most valid, what we consider valid without any errors or whatever, next highest winner? How do we?
Yeah, well, it's not that simple. Under Wisconsin law, when a project is required to be publicly bid, such as this project, if you're going to award the project, it needs to be awarded to the lowest responsible bidder. And at least based on the information available to us at, as of, as of today, MICE is the lowest responsible bidder. So, we don't have information available to us today that would allow you to reject that bid and award it to the next bidder. But we believe the Village Board does have the authority to reject all bids and rebid the project.
Carleen?
My question, I, I understand that the line that you pointed out is dramatically different, but there are several lines where there, like, there's things that are twice as much from one bidder as they are from another, or. from one bidder as they are from another, or, you know?
Correct.
And so, my question is really just about how unusual is that for?
It's unusual when it is in the magnitude of almost six to seven times.
Mm-hmm.
I, that's, I've never-
But twice is not unusual?
No.
Okay. That was just my question. Thank you.
And such a magnitude of, I mean, you look at the percentage of this contract, just in, in perspective, this, the percentage, if you were to go under the MICE bid for that line item, it's almost eighteen and a half percent, I believe. It's either seventeen and a half or eighteen and a half percent of the entire contract is, is literally under something that can be ordered for under seventy thousand dollars and installed for probably less than ten.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike, do you have a comment?
Yeah, Matt, what is your take on the risk of this if we accepted that contract?
If you awarded the contract?
Yeah.
Yeah, this has been difficult for me to get my, my mind around, you know, what are the risks? And so, when, when Jeff and I have discussed this, one of the risks is what Jeff has already described, that you might get a pay request after this particular work is, is completed for five hundred and some thousand dollars, which, and then you'd have to pay that. Obviously, now you're, you're paying for more than you're getting at that stage. Now, I suppose that's not a problem unless things go south later on in the process. So, I suppose that is one risk. The other risk is, is associated from my perspective, it's not clear to me why this, why this is a mathematically unbalanced bid. I don't, we, we don't know for certain how this happened. We know that, that the contractor has represented that he chose to include numerous items in this particular line item that are not this item, by way of explaining how, how this happened. And that may be correct, but we don't know for certain that that's correct. It could have been a mistake as well. And I'm not sure what the, you know, the implication of that would be, that perhaps the bid should have been lower. Again, I don't know. I'm speculating. I don't know. But, but we, because we don't know, there's another potential risk that, that the mathematically unbalanced bid was for, for reasons related to a mistake in, in the process. So, the risk there, I suppose, is, well, perhaps you'll get a better bid. But perhaps you won't. I mean, there's also a risk here that you could rebid this project and end up with higher costs, and then you'll be forced to either award to, to whatever the low bidder is at that point, or try it again. Maybe, maybe this year, maybe next year. So, is there any other risk, Jeff, that I've missed?
No.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, so, oh, Amanda.
Just one more question. Are other bidders informed as to the reason we're rebidding it, or do we just not give a reason and say we're going to rebid this?
Uh, we, I mean, this is all public information.
Public information.
I mean, you know, that's-
We're saying it on TV.
That's true.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we have, Dan, do you want to come up and address the board, please?
Hi. Thank you, Dan Micey with Micey Construction. First of all, I want to go over the bid a little bit with you, and if you have any questions, we can go through it. The bid overall, this happens a lot. I put together the bids ourselves, and there's, there's times where, if you look at the complete picture, Jeff is only showing you one item. If you look at the complete bid, there's numerous items where we were lower or higher than the other bids. And you're going to see that a lot of times in the bidding world, that we're trying to hide our numbers from the competition. And that's exactly what I was doing here, trying to hide from the competition the numbers. And if, for one example, topsoil, I had fifty thousand dollars on it. I think the nearest competition had like a hundred and fifty thousand on it. Right there's a hundred thousand dollar difference. But at the end of the day, if you look at the overall picture, we're doing the complete project for a hundred thousand dollars less than the next bidder. So, my question to you guys, if this is within the budget, how can you call this a mathematical error when we're within budget and we're going to do the complete package for the village?
We're not calling it a mathematical error. It's a mathematically unbalanced bid. Yeah.
But you're picking on one item when you could pick on several other items is, is my complaint. My, my overall complaint, if you go to rebid, it's really unfair to my company. I mean, our numbers are out there now. Everybody knows where we're at. We've spent hours, I mean, probably weeks on this project to put it together, only to hear that it may get rejected. And that's something I'm here to, to try to prevent.
So, Dan, let, let me just sort of, when, when I saw this, obviously, the flags went up for me. Why is this thing so high? Why, why didn't you, you know, divide, I, I want to know, what does that include?
I can, I have other items in there. So, for part of our utility, if you look at our utility numbers, the complete package under that bid item for utilities, we're like three hundred thousand dollars difference between the next bidder. Some of that money is thrown into there.
But shouldn't you have explained that somewhere, or staff, because it, it looks odd?
Right. I don't, I mean, lump sum bids, you don't explain any of it. It's just how I see the bid. Each contractor is different.
Yeah.
So, we're, we're constantly playing with our numbers is, is what I'd like to state, so.
I attest, I mean, I look at this as far as, when we do, I agree completely. If it's a lump sum project, we have one line on the bid. So, you know, and, and that contractor agrees to do a hundred percent of that work under those contracts for one dollar item, you know, and that's, that's the bid we ask. When we're looking for unit price bids, unit price bids in, in any project, whether it's a roadway project or anything else, is going to be trued up at the end based on the actual units, either installed or non-installed by the contractor. And so, we do expect that the contractors, when they say they're going to put in twelve-inch ductile iron pipe, that it's going to be a hundred and fifty dollars a foot, that that's, you know, their cost. Now, I mean, I understand there's some playing around with the numbers, and I understand some of that, but, and, and all this information goes out publicly anyways. All of these bid tabs and everything like that, that's all public information. There's nothing hidden. I, I do agree, it's, you know, it's a little challenging, but, you know, to put literally five hundred thousand dollars, or four hundred and fifty, four hundred and sixty thousand dollars extra under a bid item that, that has nothing to do with that bid item, either points to me that there was an error made, or that there was, that, that it's what Dan is attesting, that he put all this stuff under there. I, I just, I don't like that. I don't like that going into a large project we're at. I'd rather go into it with a much more cleaner bids and, and a cleaner recommendation.
So, Jeff, my question, have you ever seen this?
I've never seen this.
Never seen it before?
No. I mean, we see stuff that's, like you said, you can see stuff that's double.
Yeah.
You know, and, and you can see stuff where it's like, I mean, one of the concerns that we had when we opened up the bid, we said, they only have fifty thousand dollars in their topsoil. We've got a lot of topsoil. It's a park, you know, with a lot of playing fields. And so, that's when architects were going, landscape architects, Rettler, were going down it, and then like, all of a sudden, like, holy crud, there is, you know, something wonky here, because we've got five hundred and, over five hundred thousand dollars higher than the other bids under this one line item.
All right.
And it's a piece of equipment.
Yeah. Matt?
Yeah, one of the things that, that I think has just been mentioned is, I guess, another potential risk that, again, I, I guess I don't have my hands around fully, but my understanding is that with the unit price bid, as Jeff described, that the actual cost can be adjusted later based on the number, you know, the volume of soft soil or what have you. And so, what, what I've been trying to understand is, well, if, if we've got a bunch of costs kind of built into this one item, how is that potentially going to impact how the numbers are trued up later? And I, I guess I'm concerned about that. I'm not sure I fully understand what the connection is, but I, I sense there might be a connection between a unit cost bid like this and putting a lot of those costs into, because there, there won't be any question later. I mean, there's X number of dugouts, so that's not going to change. It's going to be X number of dugouts. But some of the things that you built into that line item, those, that units might be different than what you're showing on your bid, I guess, is what I was thinking.
If we decided, I mean, one of the things we've kicked around is, is we might decide to add a fourth field, depending on funding and everything like that. I don't think it's going to happen, but if we added a fourth field, there's two additional dugouts, you know, and that's another hundred and eighty thousand dollars. So, that's where the risk, that's additional risk that comes in, that you're, I mean, and that's why you want prices relatively reflecting the cost that the contractor needs to be able to install or provide that product.
But you can't go twenty-five percent over this project that you have right now.
And that's fine.
You know, so, that line item is just for this bid item, so we're just pertaining to this one job.
Yeah. And we had asked if we could take that out, if we could take that line item out of the contract. And of course, he's, he, Dan says absolutely not, you know, so, I mean, that, because we could go out and contract the, those dugouts and have them installed for seventy, eighty thousand dollars total, or something like that. But, and I don't, I don't blame them all for saying absolutely not. That's not the way it works. But my view is, is there's, there's enough uncertainty here. I don't like going into a three point two million dollar project with that kind of uncertainty. The cleanest thing for the village is to rebid and seek clean, balanced bids.
All right, that's, any other comments or questions from our board? Mike, yeah?
Yeah, does it mitigate our risk at all if this is the last item that we pay them for?
Uh, no.
Well, yeah, but it's, I mean, at that point, you've accepted everything else, so. No?
Yeah, I wouldn't, I wouldn't.
Okay. All right, so, there's no other que, we do have a motion and a second on the table, and that motion, second, is to direct staff to advertise and rebid Contract A of this project. So, I'm going to call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay. Carrie's. We'll go to H, which is JCPark redevelopment project bidding phases amendment one with Rettler Corporation in the amount of sixty-five hundred dollars. Jeff, I assume this is just to rebid this project, correct?
This is, yeah, exactly.
Yep. So, staff is recommending that we approve, so we can get the bid, new bids out and get them back. Amanda and Derek, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. A is accept the bid and award contract to Speedway Sand and Gravel in the amount of four hundred and sixty-four thousand eight dollars and ten cents. For the Janesville Street and South Berry Parkway intersection project, staff recommendation is to approve as presented. I think we had those bids too. Jeff, in your memo, you showed those to us, I think.
Huh?
You showed those to us.
Yeah, they're, they're in, yeah, four hundred and sixty.
So, they're, they're the low bid.
Speedway Sand and Gravel is the low bid, correct?
So, we'll take a, we can take a motion in a second to approve. Carlene and Amanda, any discussion? Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? All right. J is police department request to purchase bulletproof vests and ballistic shields using available fund balance in the equipment building capital fund. The recommendation is to approve. Chief, I don't know if you want to say anything, or you want us just to?
Uh, I'll just speak briefly. Much like the fire chief, I have a team of people that work on grants. I will say, there aren't many for law enforcement. There just aren't. And the ones that are there have very limited, are very limited. So, like, for example, this one, we can try for fifty percent reimbursement per vest. And when I say vest, these are the vests we wear underneath our uniform, or in those, those little vest carriers. Every five years, the manufacturer recommends we replace them, and we certainly want to follow those recommendations, because those are, could be what saves our lives in a critical moment. So, how this, it's called a BV, BVP grant. It's through a Department of Justice. I think ever since I've been with Oregon Police Department, it's been seventeen years, we've put in for this grant every year. Like I said, you can get upwards of fifty percent for the vest. I don't think we've ever gotten that amount. Basically, there's a large pool of money, and then depending on how many applications they get for vests throughout the state, they then break us off a little piece each for each department, and then we, we run with it. I, I list in the, the memo what type of vest we purchase for each employee. It's the exact same vest. They're priced at eight ninety-five apiece. That is pretty average for cost. We had purchased quite a few at the end of last year, and that's talked about in this memo. But we still need to purchase nine more bulletproof vests in 2022. We, we did have a remainder of three eighty-seven fifty with the grant money awarded. We did try putting in for another grant recently through Alliant. It was a safety grant, and unfortunately, we were denied. So, this is kind of where we sat. And due to inflation and other expenditures, we had to kind of think outside the box. As you could see, these, this is kind of even more detailed list on the second page of who exactly still needs vests, and, and kind of what that cost would be, what grant money's left over, how that's allocated. So, essentially, we're still looking at seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents to cover the vest we still need for this year. In addition to that, we've, you know, we've had a very limited equipment budget for quite some time, and my predecessor, you, by what she can get with that money, which we totally appreciate the money we do get, but, you know, it certainly limits us. We have one, what I would call a tactical shield, that's a, it's a hard case shield that we can use in some sort of situation where we believe there's a possibility shots could be fired. And it's just that extra layer of protection for officers. As you all, I'm sure, remember, in November of twenty-one, we, we responded to a woman who had been shot. It's, she had reported she accidentally shot herself, but what it ended up being was an attempted homicide. As our officers were responding, obviously, it would have been ideal to pull out that shield and approach that way. We're talking about an apartment building where the walls are pretty paper thin. A bullet could very easily go through. Unfortunately, that, that hard shell shield doesn't fit in the back of our squad like it should. We just have too much equipment back there. So, unfortunately, it does sit at the PD. So, what happened is, is we responded, and those shots were fired. We actually had somebody from the PD have to respond. We were very fortunate in that it was only, I would say, two, three blocks away, but still, that's, that's time. That's a lot of time, that that officer standing outside that, that apartment building, or apartment. We were actually in the hallway at that point. So, we, as we were looking at the fact that we had to buy all these vests anyway, we, we looked and researched, you know, what could be a better alternative. And you see in, in the packet, that there are these roll-up shields. So, it rolls up, almost like a sleeping bag. And it, it serves many purposes. The, the one downside to it is it doesn't have any sort of opening to where you can see through it like the shield does. Obviously, you can't have it, because it rolls up. It condenses down into something smaller. But that's where our tactical helmets come in, and we can certainly look above it. The good thing about this particular roll-up tactical shield is that if we buy more than one, they actually can combine and make an even bigger shield if we need it. With this particular version, we have what we call rifle plates. We have those in, in a, like an active shooter type situation. Our officers are trained to put that extra vest on. It's actually a vest that sits over your tactical vest, or your bulletproof vest. And what it does is that, that can actually stop a rifle round. Those plates can be removed and actually drop down into these shields, which is all new into what, based on, in comparison to what we have currently. What I think is a huge benefit to these as well is the fact that we can use them if we're trying to evacuate children from a residence or other people. We can use this as a shield for them. So, there's just a lot of wins with this. They are expensive. I mean, any, any good equipment is expensive. So, you know, we, we talked with, with Lisa and Martin about, you know, is there a way we could find that money? It looks like there is some money in the four fourteen funds, and we've had some equipment vehicles that have been sold in the past, where that money's now been sitting. So, basically, what I'm asking the board is for their consideration in allocating that surplus of funds from recent auction proceeds towards purchasing this really very much needed equipment.
All right. And so, Chief, the, the amount you're asking for us to approve is, again, just let me make sure, seven thousand six hundred and sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents?
That's just for the best.
That's just for the best.
Oh. So, what is, what is our total that we're looking at for tonight?
Eleven thousand dollars.
Yeah, I think it's between eleven, twelve thousand dollars. Yeah, I think it's between eleven, twelve thousand dollars, um, the, so with the, the vendor with the shields, um, has been delayed in getting back to us, I think it's just simply people are working from home, so there's that delay in getting, getting us a specific quote, uh, but it's also, so in addition to these, these shields, we need some lighting equipment in the front of them, um, that we can easily activate from the safety of the, you know, inside of the shield, but that can light up outwards, um, like, in the, the situation we were in where we were going into that apartment, lighting was limited, um, you know, our officers are already kinda hiding by, behind the shield looking and advancing, uh, they need that lighting so they can best see what's going on, um, so I would say, um, I think it's between twelve to fourteen thousand dollars, but it essentially would be for the nine vests, and the two, uh, roll-up tactical shields with lighting.
Okay, so nine vests and two shields? Is what you're asking, okay? All right. We clear? So you wanna make a motion? All right, Amanda, go ahead.
Two shields with lighting?
With lighting, two shields with lighting.
Yeah, and, um, I think we could, in, with all of this, um, get affordable lighting for the current non-folding ballistic shield too, that does not have any lighting as well.
So how much money is in the fund now, uh, like, from those proceeds? Is there enough to cover all that?
Yeah, there's enough funds in there to cover the purchase.
Okay.
They sold a car, I think it was two years ago, I got like sixteen thousand dollars for it, so there's plenty of funds available to purchase all this equipment.
All right, Amanda, you wanna make a motion?
Sure.
Go ahead.
To, a motion to approve, uh, all the equipment.
All the equ, all the needed equipment.
To, yeah.
Okay.
All right, let me do this, to ta, I make a motion to take it from the four fourteen funds, uh, allow, allow funds from that to be used to purchase nine vests and, uh, two shields with lighting, right?
Yeah, and you, I, I would say lighting for any of the ballistic shields, I think that'll cover all three.
Okay.
Okay.
That's my.
All right, yeah, all right, the, can we get a second on that? All right, Jerry, discussion, yeah, Derek?
I just have, uh, one quick question, on the vests, uh, for, seeing as you need nine of them, I see they come in male, female, and unisex, are we purchasing just the unisex ones, just in case, you know, turnover happens, or how are we, how are you approaching that?
So, you, we can't take one vest from me to someone else, they all fit very differently, uh, what I can tell you is I wear a male's vest, um, I think the female ones fit really weird, uh, but I can't speak for the other women in our department, uh, but overall, this cost is the same, um, and, to my knowledge, I don't think they sell unisex, I think it's just, I don't even know if they call the male one the male one, I think it's just the, your standard, and then your women's fit.
I was just making sure that these are, you know, fit for intended people.
Yeah.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second?
Can I ask a question?
Yeah.
What is the four fourteen fund?
That's our, like, our capital equipment fund.
Okay.
It's not a, it's not the general operations of the village, it's where we buy, um, equipment, um, for the police department, for the public works, we buy, um, vehicles through there for both, so, it's like our capital fund for equipment.
Okay, so we got a motion and a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? It was a tough one, all right, Chief, you got it.
All right, thank you.
All right, so we're on to K, which is, uh, creating a sergeant hour proceed, procedures policy for the police department, uh, staff recommendation is to approve, Chief, I'm gonna let you, you wanna tell us about this?
Yeah, um, I, we tried to really be very specific in our memo to you guys, just so that you could kinda understand the background, so I'll, I'll, I'll be happy to take questions on the background, but I'm just gonna skip to kinda what's currently happening, so, in our last union negotiations, um, we wanted to make sure there was incentive to attract, um, the, the best of what was out there interested in law enforcement, but also retain our patrol, um, union employees, so we were able to achieve that, um, and what, unfortunately, what it eventually started to cause was this, uh, wage gap between our, um, patrol unit and our first-line supervisors, um, you know, I can't speak for my predecessor, but I will certainly say I put a lot of, um, work on my first-line supervisors, uh, I have held them very, to a very high standard, um, and, and they are incredibly important to our agency, if, if our staff needs more training, if they need mentoring, if they need coaching, on the boots hitting the road, my first-line supervisors are my first people, my first line of defense in recognizing it, and then we start working on things, so it is so important to have good leadership in those first-line supervisors, um, it, yeah, as we worked through, after that, uh, raise had hit, and we started to notice this wage gap issue, and unfortunately, right now at this time, um, the sergeant rate is only fifty-seven cents more than our senior officers who they supervise, um, we were worried that this may cause an issue with us retaining our first-line supervisors, and unfortunately, just recently, I received the resignation of our second shift sergeant, um, I'll be honest with you, it's gonna be a hard hit for us, uh, our second shift is our youngest staff, nobody wants to work two PM to ten PM, so we typically get our newest people who, um, are typically single, don't have kids, or, or whatever, but they're our youngest, um, typically, and, uh, the second shift sergeant's role, uh, for quite a long time has been just mentoring, coaching, developing, um, so that, that's why it was really key to have, uh, a, an experienced and, uh, just very dedicated supervisor on that shift, so, uh, losing that employee's gonna be a, a hard hit for our agency, um, not only was, did this gap issue cause that, cause he, he was very open and honest with me, it was one of the reasons he's chosen to leave, and, uh, he's doing what, uh, we're seeing in this profession, is people are just not staying in law enforcement, they're going private sector, and that's exactly what he's doing, um, with that said, not only did it cause this concern of us losing a supervisor, but I have some serious concerns whether or not we'll have any interest internally, um, you know, I think, you know, uh, employment out there is always open to external candidates, um, I think that, that option's out there, but we have some really great internal, uh, talent, um, and I, I want them to have that incentive to step up as a leader, I think some of them already have, given what we've been through, um, so I'm hoping we can make some aggressive changes to fix this, um, you know, I, I try to, when I identify a, a problem and bring it to you guys, I try to bring it with a potential solution, um, so the solution at this point is, uh, my predecessor, when he had stepped in, had taken our sergeants from a nineteen fifty, which is what the union works, uh, back to a twenty eighty, um, if we're looking at per-hour wage, that's what is the first issue, is it cause that, um, gap concern, um, I've developed a policy for all of you to consider that would take them back to the nineteen fifty, that will, at least, on a, for a temporary solution, bring their, um, hourly pay gap up to three dollars and fifteen cents in comparison to your top patrol, um, I, I can't emphasize this enough, though, this is a truly temporary solution, um, and in fact, this kinda goes against my other mission here, we need more people on the road, that's exactly what I'm working against, but I gotta keep my leadership, um, it is so key, especially in our times right now, um, so what I'm, what I'm asking from, uh, this village board is to consider this policy, and I'd like for it to go in effect immediately, um, if it does, my goal is to, uh, I have a meeting with the police commission tomorrow, and that's to start the sergeant process as soon as possible, because I have to have that position filled, um, with, with, uh, the staff we have, I need a supervisor on that shift, um, and, and honestly, uh, you know, my staff is watching this closely, um, all of them, and, uh, you know, I talked earlier about, uh, overtime and burnout, and the fact that we're six down right now, some of them will be coming back, but there are a few that are really picking up the slack, which I appreciate, you know, I'm hoping that, uh, from this village board, you, you can help support me, we can find a more permanent solutions very soon, um, because I, I think my team needs to know that relief's coming, um, and, uh, you know, this, this pulling in money from auctioned vehicles to buy equipment, and now this pulling back our sergeants to work, less hours, um, this is just not sustainable, um, and that's why I had talked with all of you, and then what is it, a year ago now, feels pandemic time, we lose kinda track of time, but how, things gotta change with the zero percent increase in budget, and, uh, the equipment budget and things like that, I hope we can find, uh, more sustainable, more, more, uh, better answers to, to maintain, uh, balanced budget, and, uh, staffing levels that I think this village deserves.
Okay, so what the Chief is looking for is a, um, a motion to approve a change to the sergeant hourly policy, saying that, is that?
Yeah.
Catch it? Okay, so I'm looking for a motion and a second, if we wanna get it on the floor and discuss, Jerry and then Amanda, all right, we got a motion and a second, discussion, or questions for Chief, yeah, Mike?
So you compare the top, uh, salary for a patrol officer to the salary for the lowest-paid sergeant, what's the top salary for your top sergeant? How big of a discrepancy is that?
My guess, help me out with that.
Second, if, while, while Lisa's getting that information, if you clearly are cutting hours for your sergeants, and, I mean, it's your call, but how are you going to, to staff the difference then, and with that, is, does that mean more overtime, and will that be more of a hit on the budget?
No, I don't, it won't be more overtime, so how we were getting the twenty eighty before is we would have them work eight and a half hours versus eight, but, um, what that supervisor did was they would carry over a half hour into that next shift, which was a benefit, but if I don't have great quality supervisors to even work the shift, there's no point in that half hour.
So the, the, excuse me, nineteen hundred and fifty hours is, is a forty-hour work week, but you're knocking off for the vacation time, I'm assuming then, or how does that work? Cause a forty-hour work week for fifty-two weeks is, is twenty eighty.
Yeah, it's, uh, thirty-seven and, correct me, thirty-seven and a half hours work week, because it's a six-three rotation, they don't work Monday through Friday. So, what'll happen at, at, and it's, explains it in the policy, at the beginning of the year, what we do is we, we schedule them out for the entire year on that six-three rotation, and if they are shy of that nineteen fifty, we tell them, and we tell them, these are, how many hours you owe us, and they have to work those, if they're short, that's on them. It's just a wash.
All right, anybody else? So we do have a motion and a second on the table to allow a change in the sergeant hour policy effective immediately, okay, so I'll call it, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, all right, Chief?
Thank you.
All right, we'll go to, to, um, L is amendment two.
Can I ask a follow-up question on this?
You may.
So, you said this is a temporary solution, and you need more people, and I'm just wondering what you're envisioning as, like, you wanna work this out, and you wanna get it solved soon, so what are you envisioning, when are you envisioning, how long do you think it will take you to come back with something that could be a more permanent fix for this problem?
Yeah, you know, I would say I'd love to come to your next meeting and say, this is exactly how much I need, I need raises for my sergeants, and here we go, um, but I know that, uh, Martin and Lisa are working on that salary study, um, so I think that will tell the story, unfortunately, we have to wait for that, um, we're certainly rolling the dice, uh, because we may lose more people, um, but I think the fact that the village has already invested in that process and started it helps.
Okay.
And I think the, the fact that this, this change has already happened and so quickly, and I, I wanna say thank you for that, um, I do think that helps, um, what, what we've done, so I've talked with a few other chiefs about salary studies, and when we're talking about community versus just police departments, there's a lot of dynamics to police departments, you've got rotating schedules, you've got some unionized, some not, um, and all these benefits, and just, things are different, uh, for, you know, us versus other departments within the village, and it's the same with every community, so what we're doing to try to help that salary study is, um, our support services supervisor, Trac, is actually reaching out to each department as well, um, and that, that'll be helpful during negotiations too, so it kinda hits a couple different, um, issues, but, um, what we're seeing so far has been what we expected, put it that way.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, let's go to L, amendment two to the twenty-twenty-one budget, year-end adjustments, recommendation is to approve, Lisa, do you wanna summarize what, what, what you'd like to do here?
So there's a couple of things that, um, this accomplishes, um, as I've gone through and started to prepare twenty-twenty-one for the audit, um, I'm trying to, um, make sure that there's proper budget versus actual on all of the different categories, so otherwise, they write you up in the budget for that, and the other thing that this accomplishes is, um, the public works, we do our best guesstimate at what they're gonna spend their time on throughout a year, but, um, things can change throughout the year depending on the needs, so what this does, it change, it, uh, adjusts the budget to what actually happened during the year, because we just never know, I mean, they could put more time into working in parks, or they might get pulled away to spend more time.
Snow plow.
Snow plowing, or...
Leaves and weeds, yeah, brush, all that, yeah.
Okay.
So it's, it's trueing up what actually happens.
Okay, all right.
And this is, we do this annually for the public works department.
Yeah, yeah, all right, somebody wanna make a motion and a second, Amanda, motion, second, Jerry, any other discussion or questions? Yeah, Mike?
So on the first page of budget amendment two, you have two sections, the top section then is income, and the bottom is expenses, is that what I'm looking at here?
If, if you look at the very first column on the left, if the one hundred dash four, and it starts with a four, that's a, that's a revenue, and then the one hundred, and then it starts with a five, those are expenses, so it's balancing between the revenue, um, and expense areas, and some of these, you know, we don't, we can't predict exactly how many, how much we're receiving in building permits, so that's why you see all the revenue codes for building permits, but then our contractual services with, um, SafeBilt is higher, so then, I offset that with the actual expenses that we receive from SafeBilt, who is our contracted service for inspections, does that make sense?
Kind of.
Okay.
Yeah, I know, she's looking, if you go to the summary page above that, though, one page above, you've got two sections, and the top section...
Oh, I'm sorry, that's the page you were referring to?
Yes.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I misunderstood your question, so...
So, top part here would be income, and the bottom part's expenses?
The, the top part is the revenue, and the bottom section are the expenses, and that just filters from the subsequent pages into this page.
All right, Mike, you good?
I think so.
Okay, any other questions? Any discussion? Okay, we got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Posed? Okay, all right, eight is report of committees, we have none, nine is unfinished business, items are for discussion, possible action, nine A is review of the southeast expansion, planning information, and determine next steps. Martin or Elise, who's taking that? This one?
Elise's taking it.
All right, Elise has got it, all right.
I'll tell you piece of screen, cause I know we've had a long, long night here, uh, so you're, in your packet, two weeks ago, uh, we provided our development, I guess, sort of background information on the southeast expansion area, so I just wanted to go a little bit more into that, and, basically, with where the area is, sort of some of the work that's been done so far, and then, um, what next steps we, um, create, I'm not sure if we have a good point with that, so, okay, so...
Oh, no TV, it just, just goes to here.
Oh, okay, thanks, uh, so, the southeast area, this has been looked at for probably twenty, twenty-five years in village comprehensive plans, and... and with our planning consultants, our village engineer over the last two decades here. So we're talking about the highway, it doesn't really show on the screen there, but Highway 14, kind of that north-south, and then Jamesville Street, 138, that east-west connection that you see there. So the majority of this land, this is about 100 acres or so. The area that's in that dark boundary, that dark black line, is actually all owned by one owner, the Sweeney family. They've, it's sort of one of the remnants of their family farm. They're a very active longstanding family in the area. So they own about 300 or so of this 400 acres that has been potentially shown for development and annexation into the village for quite some time. I made this a couple of months ago. This is a really rough estimate at how land use might look out here. So the pink area is commercial, sort of centered along the Highway 138, Highway 14 interchange. We really don't have a lot of opportunities within the village to have major highway interchanges, you know, within our limits. And so that really brings a unique mix of commercial, business opportunities, employment opportunities that might not otherwise, you know, just from a visibility perspective, might not otherwise attract business on a different site. So commercial or sort of mixed use will be focused around the intersection. The area that's in yellow is shown as potential light industrial. That includes the Oregon Farm Center parcels. But that area does tend to be a little bit lower line and water. And so that would lend itself to not having basements, probably more slab-on-grade construction for large employers, light industrial. I'll go into this a little bit, but we really, especially for industrial spaces and large employers, we don't have any more sites. So I get calls every couple of months from somebody who wants to relocate their, you know, large landscaping company to the village. Or they have a construction company and they need a, you know, big yard to store all their equipment. We don't have a place to put them. And it's unfortunate to be in that position where we're turning away, you know, employment and business opportunities, tax-based opportunities for the village. So we really need a release file to be able to handle that growth in the future. The green areas are shown as potential residential or some kind of planned neighborhood, which allows for mixed uses. That's kind of more focused on the, the more hilly areas where, and better soils where basements could be constructed. And then also closer to residential areas of the village along the Lexington County Drive neighborhood. There is a future right-of-way shown, again, the laser's not going to work, but between Lexington Avenue and the green area with a kind of future 14 right-of-way. I was just going to point out Jeff. So that's been planned, I think, since probably the seventies.
Yep.
For future, you know, alignment of Highway 14. That's never really shown up in the budget in terms of actually happening. So at this point, we have to assume it will happen one day. It's, you know, state right-of-way, but that connection is something I'll talk about. So that's a really important part of doing any kind of development over here. So again, we have a need for developmental and interchange, larger business sites. And then we have here kind of an opportunity to have a wider range of housing and also attract people who might be working in Madison, but they're commuting from Jamesville or Evansville, coming up through 14 and would maybe potentially like to be closer to Madison. The nice thing about development where there's not a lot of housing right now is there's not a lot of neighbors. There are some neighbors out there, Long Hill Road, but the opportunity to kind of get in and lay out, you know, maybe it's a mixed-income type neighborhood. Or Habitat, for example, has done a partnership with Veridian and Century where they actually act as a developer, did all of the roads, all of the utilities. And I believe it's 30 or 40% of the homes are Habitat homes. And then the remainder are Veridian homes, so that are market rate. So that helps pay for the infrastructure and the kind of reduced cost for those Habitat homes. So those are potential opportunities we could look at with residential over on this side of village connectivity. Again, this is just a picture of the interchange here. But multimodal bike, ped transit and car connections across 14, it's a big barrier. And so looking at how we've got people over on the other side of 14, how will they feel connected to the village? How can they get back to village services and schools and parks and trails safely? So that's, you know, for the long-term planning, but looking at, you know, connections that could be under or over 14, making sure that the improvements along 138 are, there's a separated multi-use path, things like that. Coordination with the DOT again, because we don't have our right-of-way on, they still control 138 and 14. So there would be a lot of coordination with the state. I think that's kind of what I wanted to highlight there. There's obviously no infrastructure on this side. These are all the businesses that are in this area, just have well and septic. So there would be sanitary sewer, water, along with roads, stormwater, all of that to be brought in. There's been a lot of study done that was kind of the bulk of what was provided in the packet by Rukert Milke, our village engineer, to do a look at, you know, take a look at this. The cost for some of this infrastructure, figure out phasing and kind of give some rough numbers. I think our last update, Jeff, was maybe done in 2020.
I think so, yeah.
So I think it was while Mike was still here. So there would be a lift station needed. It's hard to see with this crazy graph here with all the colors, but that lime-green station. So it would be a connection from our wastewater treatment plant under 14 to a lift station to provide the...
Sewer.
The sewer connection, thanks. We think that probably providing water over here, we would likely need a water tower to provide the kind of pressure that would be needed to support business and residential growth. Just did a quick summary of the costs of all the infrastructure for all the, that's kind of full build-out of all the infrastructure, water, road, sewer, storm sewer there. I think they put that a little over, close to $10 million. And that was cost that was against, about two years old now. But could be done in phases. And we'll note there's a lot of opportunity for funding right now, especially from the federal government for that infrastructure cost. Stormwater and wetlands is something definitely a concern over here. That land use map that I showed you before, there's sort of a tornado-shaped approximation of where the wetlands have been mapped from the DNR. The property owner for the vast majority of the land, the Sweenes, they did do a wetland delineation with their engineer in the fall of 2020. They're now working on a kind of a stormwater management plan. And they identified a couple of issues that are really low-hanging fruit, relatively low-hanging fruit, working with the DOT to get a culvert lowered near the Wisconsin's Best Cheese Shop. There's a culvert that's pretty high, and so there's a lot of water that backs up that is not able to cross under 138 to flow north to the Badfish Creek. So there may be a project down the road of actually lowering that culvert so water can pass more freely, flows northward there. So there's also been some outreach to upstream neighbors, Foxborough Golf Course, Glen Hofer with Autumn Ridge Development. Those properties all flow northward and connect to the Sweeney property. So I think kind of a system-wide stormwater management approach, again, over several years is going to be what's best for this area. There will also be a potential with commercial sites to whoever a developer, whether it's the village or like the Alpine Business Park where Lycon kind of took on, you know, installing the infrastructure themselves. Putting in some ponds from the get-go can actually help spur development because somebody who's running a, you know, hardware store can come in and say, yep, I know my stormwater is already taken care of, I can just focus on my building and my site rather than having, I know from Jeff's perspective, it's a lot more difficult to manage 12 smaller ponds than two larger ponds. And that'll certainly be something that would attract development. How are we going to pay for all of this? That's a really good question. There has been a TIF analysis done that's included in the information. But we would be looking at creating a mixed-use TIF district. That does have a limit of, for residential, only 35% of the land area can be residential. So we wouldn't be creating a TIF district and have it all be neighborhoods. But that is an option that we could look into that requires, you know, going through the, the joint review board and creating that new district and everything. As I mentioned, there's a lot of federal funding, especially right now with the infrastructure bill. And then the EDA, the Economic Development Authority, their main focus is really business parks, commercial development, job creation. So there's a, there's a whole wealth of different grants and funding opportunities we could tap into here. And I think, given the federal focus on infrastructure, this would be a good time to pursue some of that further and see if we would qualify. And then opportunity for public-private partnerships, especially with residential, knowing that the housing market is so strong right now. There's probably a line of developers, housing developers. If we, you know, were able to work with the landowner and, and give them the opportunity, there's probably many groups that would be interested in building homes within the village. Hopefully, you know, a mix of housing types, and that's something we can guide through a comprehensive plan and all of that to have array of affordability and different levels of density for housing. But that could help fund some infrastructure too for sharing the cost with a private developer. That's what we did on the west side of the village for Alpine Meadows, Bergmont. We did the west side sewer interceptor, shared that cost with the developer. And anytime we have a new neighborhood come in, like Highlands of Netherwood, they pay a fee to sort of connect into that interceptor. And that helps reimburse that initial installation cost. So a couple of steps to go through to actually implement this would be annexation, an urban service area amendment, which we just went through for Autumn Ridge. But that's the area where we can provide public water and sewer so that boundary would need to be expanded. We'd have a comprehensive plan amendment. Some of these areas are shown in our comp plan, but we definitely want, want to dig in deeper as to what specifically we want to see in certain areas. Creating that TID, that Tax Increment Financing District. And then finally zoning and plat approval and road layout and all that fun stuff. So generally, we're sort of seeking your nod of approval to move forward with restarting conversations with the Sweeney family. It's probably been at least six months that we've reached out to them and sort of waiting for, you know, staff and board to get caught up to speed on this before we move forward. Also working with adjacent property owners, which might be part of an annexation and bringing them into the village. Looking into development and funding opportunities and potentially bringing some of those opportunities to either the board and/or the, the landowner. And then working cooperation with the town of Rutland. All of this land is within the town of Rutland now. They're aware of, you know, this land has been on our comp plan for future development for a long time. But there are opportunities like cost sharing that can be arranged so that they don't lose that tax base immediately. But there's a certain amount of time that we share some of the tax revenue from development in this area. So it kind of helps wean them off of relying on the taxes from this land to support their operations in the town. So, super quick, it's a huge project, there's a million different moving pieces. We're hoping our village engineer, Lauren, once she's caught up to speed here, she'll be a really big part of this planning process too. But happy to answer any questions, we can certainly come back to this as well. But hoping through the spring and summer, we can kind of start these conversations again. And then if opportunities do come our way, maybe, you know, moving this forward, we'll, we'll kind of jump to the top of the list here.
So Elise, we'll, we'll take questions that people might have on the board. But you, you are looking for some direction from us in terms of next steps to, to be able to go forward and do some of these things.
Right, we don't have anything on the table right now. But I think we just, before we move forward and start, you know, conversations with the Sweenes or perhaps, you know, working with a housing developer or something, we'd like the board to know what we're doing and, and be supportive of that.
Yeah.
Where we start spending a lot of time on it.
Right, if this isn't a priority for the village board, we, we want to know. Because obviously, we don't want to spend our time working on it if it's not something that's interesting to the board right now.
Right, and I think, Martin, when you started and you kind of went through all the goals for the board too, the southeast area was listed on a lot of those for transportation, sustainability, job creation, growing the tax base, providing, you know, opportunities for growth in the village. So I think this hits a lot of the goals that we have stated early on when this board started last year.
And, and this has been talked about for years. And, I mean, we're just basically looking at what's the possibilities. So open it up, questions for Elise? Anybody? Mike's got one, and Carleen?
Yeah, I strongly support this. I don't think we can keep growing to the west without having all sorts of transportation issues and running roads out there. So I'm strongly in favor, but I have two, two potential questions that immediately come to mind when I read through the plan. One is, what's the rationale for putting residential areas right along 138? It seems like that corridor would be much better spent for commercial and industrial uses. And nobody likes living on the highway anyway. So what's your rationale for that? And the second is, is our, is this entire area looking to go under a TIF? That would be immensely costly to the rest of the village to provide services for that big of an area for 30 years while the TIF closes.
Yeah, so your first question about residential along the highway. So you see in the green area, I think I've got that shown as planned neighborhood. That's the category that exists right now in our comp plan. And that's of mix of uses, mix of residential uses as well as neighborhood business institutional. So the idea is that it would sort of transition from the, the highways with sort of commercial areas along the front, probably mixed-use buildings or multifamily buildings, and then transition back to single or two-family type neighborhoods that wouldn't be right along the road there. So there'd be a natural progression. And this is super high-level, really quick, you know, taking, I tried to also, I mean, there was thought put into this, but some of the natural boundaries with the wetlands and the, the way that the river runs north there kind of provides some good separation between some of the uses. So this would be refined further. As far as the TIF district, it wouldn't necessarily have to be all of this land that would be in the TIF district. And it could be that we decide to just focus the TIF on some of the more commercial and industrial areas and leave the residential on its own. Perhaps still pursue an opportunity for sharing costs for infrastructure for residential that might be able to be up and running sooner than, you know, waiting for your industrial park tenants to come in. So that could be done, you know, in the first phase of development is get residential in, have that developer help pay for the sewer interceptor line, lift station, the water tower. And then the industrial and commercial development could benefit from some of that infrastructure that's put in, in place. Because the residential might be able to be supporting itself financially without TIF. So mixed-use TIF is an option, we could go with a more traditional business, you know, TIF district as well.
Okay, thank you.
All right, Carleen, and then Matt.
Yeah, I can't help but remember that the last, the last time we were here, the Badfish Creek folks made the presentation and it just runs right along that northeast, north...
Yeah, that is the north border of those parcels.
Yeah, of that. And just want to point that out, that we just really need to be conscious about that in any kind of development that we do. And it's just a statement more than anything else.
Yeah, yeah.
I just wanted to add a couple of things to what Elise said in response to the questions, why residential and TIF. I've been involved in a lot of the staff level discussions relating to this area, including discussions with the current owners, the Sweeney family. And the current owners are developers. Right now, they're mainly active in, is it North Carolina?
North Carolina.
North Carolina. And what they have said to us in earlier conversations is that they see tremendous opportunity from, in terms of residential development in the area south, or is it south of 138?
Yep.
That is their primary interest, is residential development in that area. And, and, and they've moved their real entire development focus away from commercial and into a residential business model. So they at least see demand more so for residential than anything else there. And I know that, I think I've heard from planning consultants we've worked with at Banda Wall and discussed this with. They see tremendous demand for residential development in that area, notwithstanding its proximity to the highway. So certainly that's what I've heard in, in at least some of our staff discussions. The area north of 138, different story, I think, for reasons relating to wet soil maybe. With respect to TIF, you know, the, the other thing that I, I think I've, I've heard in some of these meetings is that the residential could be the engine that provides the cash flow upfront to finance some of these infrastructure expenses. And so it may be, depending on who ultimately wants to develop out there and what kind of agreement can be reached and what the funding sources are going to be. I think it's too early to say, frankly, whether there would be residential included in the TIF or not. My guess is it's too early to take that off the table at this stage because we just don't know enough yet about exactly what, what's going to happen, who, who, who's going to be partnering with the village, what other funding sources might be available.
And as I mentioned, there might be an opportunity to have some kind of affordable housing be part of the mix out here. If it's part of a TIF district and the village is sort of guiding development through TIF grants, we may have more of a say on what kind of housing we see out there versus just sort of letting that be its own private development, you know, become a market-rate neighborhood. But then that provides more revenue and maybe more ability for that developer to help provide some of the, the cost sharing for that infrastructure. So sort of that'll be a decision point. But until we have an opportunity in front of us, we, we won't be able to sort of weigh the pros and cons of that option. But like Matt said, something to leave on the table to explore further.
All right, Jeff, can you put those next steps back up, please?
Elise has them.
Oh, Elise has got them, okay, sorry. I thought you were running things.
No, she's got them.
So this, so this, this is what, this is what staff is kind of looking for us to sort of give our blessing for them to, to continue to move forward, do some research, do some talking to developers, Sweeney, the Sweeney family and Jason property owners, funding opportunities to support development. And then also important is to work with the town of Rutland. So, yeah, Amanda?
Yeah, so, so you've talked to the Sweeney family a little bit in the past and they're kind of on board with this?
Yeah, so when I started in the fall of 2019, we were able to reconnect with them. And we met with them probably a couple of times remotely and then a few times in person. So probably at least five times, I would say, in the last two years. They're, again, they keep, kept hearing from Bob Sweeney, we're ready, willing and able to help support you. You know, we want to make this land, you know, its highest and best use, it's fully paid off, it's the family farm. And he's one of several siblings, I think, that are sort of involved in the trust for the land. But he is a developer, he's in North Carolina. They mostly do commercials, as I said, but they see a big demand for residential in their area as well as here. But they're willing to work with us. And that's kind of another question that we'll get into is how do we want to structure our partnership with them? We want to make sure that we're not, you know, handing over all of our, our cards as the village, but we want to work in partnership with them towards a goal that, you know, is going to benefit our whole community. And it kind of makes sense financially for them. They may want to be more or less involved than we think they will too. You know, times have changed. It's been a little while since we've reached out to them, but they know that we wanted to bring our, our board up to speed.
So it's their intention to hang on to the property and they would, you know, be involved as developers come forward and help, we just kind of decide together whether that's something we want there or is that kind of, they want to be sort of partnering with us?
It sounded like that. I mean, I think, as Matt said, they're, they seem a lot more interested in being involved with residential development. And it might just mean involved with finding somebody to buy all the land and then that developer deals with it, somebody more local. But I think, I mean, they mentioned at one point, well, if the village just wants to buy all this land for commercial and industrial and you guys develop your own business park and you sell the lots, you know, we're not really interested in dealing with that. But that might not be, that might be too great a risk for the village to take on, you know, two hundred acres and then try to develop that. And so that might not be the route that we go. But working in partnership with them in some way, shape or form, I think that's kind of the next step is figuring out what that looks like.
Matt?
Yeah, I mean, that, that's right. What the next step is, but I think one of the things that's important to recognize is that if the board authorizes the next step, which is to go back to the Sweeneys to, to restart the conversation, I think I view that, that, as I see it, the board would also be essentially authorizing staff to say that the board recognizes and is supportive of, of the general framework that's been laid out tonight. The mix of land uses that's been described, the mix of funding sources being available for at least discussion. The, I, I think that's the, the, the approval to go forward. The next step would be to say, you can go to the Sweeneys and say the village is, is prepared to move forward with that discussion. And then I think the question will be, what do we learn from the Sweeneys in terms of how they, what are they interested in doing? How would, would they want to, what would they want their role to be? Are they interested in developing some of it, all of it, none of it? I don't think we know for certain what the answers to those questions are. So, and my sense is there's been a feeling out process going on, right? Where the Sweeneys have been, what, what's, what are the possibilities? How would the village be willing to support us? And, and we've been feeling them out. Well, what are you interested in doing? And so I think this is, but this would be, I think, the first time that we would go back to the Sweeneys after having had this level of detailed discussion with the village board about the information that you're seeing now. And so in my mind, it allows staff, it would allow Elise and Martin and other staff to go to the Sweeneys and say, you know, we have now, we have a framework that the board is aware of. They've endorsed, at least conceptually, moving in this direction, recognizing there's a lot, there's a lot to work out in terms of the details. Is that fair, Elise?
Yeah, I think we just want to know that the board, you know, doesn't think nothing should happen over here right now or we want this all to be residential or something drastically different than what's been presented. Because that way we'll be able to kind of move forward in some way, shape or form with the Sweeneys and start to pursue development in a way that we, we hope that there's, you know, general support for. We're not just, you know, spinning our wheels with something that ultimately you guys aren't in favor of.
Yeah. You just want to find out the possibility. It all, it's still going to all come back to us.
Oh, yeah.
Nothing's going to happen until...
This will be an all-hands-on-deck, big project that you'll spend a lot of time on if it moves forward.
Yeah, okay.
It's the next fifteen years of my life, so.
All right, Jerry. All right, Jerry, go ahead.
I'm going to make a motion that we authorize the staff to move forward with a conversation with the Sweeney family about their property. And they also pursue development and funding opportunities to support that development. While they're doing that, they should work in cooperation.
It's a good idea, Jerry.
Yes, that's good. Yep, all right, do we have a second? All right, Amanda? Any other discussion? All right, I'm going to call. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, you guys got your... All right, I think we're, we're almost there. Ten is new business, draft community service coordinator, job description, community development functions. Martin, do you want to take this?
Yeah.
Was your memo?
Okay. I told Kenny this meeting would be done at eight, so I got six minutes.
You do, you might make it.
So as the board is aware, in the budget for 2022, we set aside funds for a new position that was going to be focused on recreation-related things, knowing that the park reservations will come back to the village here at some point from the school district. So we have a number of tasks related to recreation that seems to be growing every year and no staff or position that really handles that. So with that in mind, we're planning on filling that position in the mid-part of the year. And so have developed a job description. And in the development of that job description, kind of prompted a few questions and different things to think about. So first of all, the two things that, that came up in my mind, and as I mentioned here in the memo, is, one, we have increasing demands, we have gaps in some of the things that we're trying to do as, as far as, you know, parks and recreation. But we don't really have a lot of that stuff right now, but it will grow over time. The other piece of this is, you know, in a lot of communities, there's a park and recreation department, but that never happened here. And a lot of that ended up happening in the community ed department at the school district. So my thought was, well, we don't want to replace that. We don't want to try to duplicate that. They're doing what they're doing. They have resources, they have expertise, they have a structure. We don't need to replace that or try to do the same thing that they're doing. And so in developing the job description, I kind of settled on two main objectives for the job, which is, one, to provide connection and support. So to help the village better communicate and engage with the community. So that would involve things like special events, services, different quality of life functions, things, ways that we can interact and cooperate with the school district on community organizations, sports clubs, businesses, Chamber of Commerce, other government agencies, trying to build those relationships and cooperation and to better support the community needs in those areas. And then, as I said, even though those demands are growing, they, we may not have necessarily a ton of work related to that, at least right now. And so this position would also provide administrative support basically to the village hall functions. And so if you look at the job description, you can see things like coordinating park reservations, collection of fees, liaisoning with community groups, being a resource to the public, helping develop new ideas and services, attending community events, providing support to the park board. So that's, that's kind of a snapshot of all the things that this position would, would do. And so I elected the title at community services coordinator. And so the second piece of this item is now this community development umbrella. So thinking about where this position fits within our current structure, like I said, we don't have a parks and recreation department. Our parks operations are housed within the public works department. And so where can we put a position that does these sorts of things? And so after thinking about it a little bit, kind of came up with this community development department. And so if you look at my memo there, I talk about a couple of communities in Dane County that have community development departments. They're pretty common. They cover just kind of this wide variety of things that we're talking about here. So they do things like development and planning and zoning, but then they also do a lot of quality of life stuff. So you can see, like in some prairie, they, they oversee public transportation. McFarland, they do sustainability. Middleton, they do sustainability, public art, historic preservation, housing. Wanakee, again, housing. So, so that's kind of the, the model that I think that we should go to, especially with bringing on this position. I think Wanakee is probably the best example of a community that just transitioned to a community development department. They have a director of community development and then one position underneath, which would be similar to what we have here. And so as part of that, my recommendation is to retool the director of planning and zoning administrator position. So when that position was hired in 2019, the job description is very technical, technical oriented. So it's very planning, zoning, development-focused. But actually, what's happening in practice is Elise is doing significantly much more than that. I mean, she's involved with housing, she's involved with parks and rec. She's involved with tourism, she's involved in other community engagement functions and that sort of thing. So to me, it's more recognizing that that's the actual position that's occurring. And now we have this staff member who is going to help us fill those needs even more so and sticking them within that department. So I think, Jeff, you had up there the kind of the, yeah, that, how that umbrella would look there. And so what I'm recommending is to approve the job description that's been presented for the community services coordinator and then to authorize redrafting what is now Elise's position, director of planning and zoning, to a re-titled position, director of community development.
All right, Jerry?
Martin, when are you thinking about hiring this person?
It'll be mid-year. It'll be, well, actually, it might be a little bit later than mid-year because we don't have any place to put them in this building. So whenever village hall is expected to get closer to being finished, I think optimistically, end of summer, fall sometime is when we're hoping to fill the position.
So this would be a position that would be supported by the tax levy?
It is, yep. And it was budgeted in the 22 budget to start in July, yep.
Anybody else? Mike?
Yeah, I'm assuming you're on board with this, Elise?
It's the first I'm hearing of it.
Oh, yeah, by the way.
As I go through the job description here, I'm presuming that, I mean, none of the real functions that are in community development can keep this person busy, which is why you're saying administrative aid and help to the clerks. I'm assuming eventually, as this position grows, their job description will narrow?
Yeah, I would think so. I mean, it, as we kind of figure out what this sort of looks like in terms of, are we going to offer recreation programs in the future? Are we going to fill some other kind of cultural, educational need that isn't being met in the community? This job will probably narrow and there'll probably be more resources added into this function. And over time, you know, it may break off into its own separate department. Maybe we do have a recreation department at some point in the future. But right now, we're just not there and I don't think we're going to be there anytime soon. So how do we kind of fit this into meeting the needs we have now for those types of things? But also recognizing they're probably not going to have a ton of work there so that they can assist with the things that we do have going on in village hall.
Okay. One last question. One of the two things you have in mind is to provide connection and support and provide administrative support. The administrative support, I get. The connection and support thing, can you be more concrete about what that is? Because I'm really having a hard time wrapping my head around what that would be.
Sure, so right now, for example, you know, something like, Elise, we had a meeting with the Oregon Food Pantry. And that doesn't really have anything to do with planning and zoning, but it's something that Elise is doing because it relates to what I'm talking about here, which is she's doing a lot of different things that just kind of fall in between gaps. And so this position here, we're kind of thinking they're going to have the time to meet with these different groups, to engage with these groups, to see how the village can better support these groups and that sort of thing. And if there's any other things that the village could be doing beyond what we're doing right now. Because what we have happening right now is, especially when it comes to like recreation stuff or park stuff, is we don't have a dedicated person that focuses on that stuff. So it ends up kind of falling into Elise's lap or my lap or Lisa's or Jeff. And it's never a priority. So it's, because it's not a function of our job and none of us have real of that expertise either. And I think that's why the reservation system got farmed out to the, the school district because they have that structure in place. And so that's kind of the, the thing that we, that we really need is something that can help fill in the gap of this nebulous of recreation, quality of life, cultural sort of thing that is taking time away from some of the other staff that, that isn't necessarily their function, but that we can, that we can now cover and stay on top of because we are having those increasing demands. And then hopefully, as you talked about before, you know, eventually that may become something much larger like a recreation department.
I would just add that... I would just add that there's a lot of work that, again, all of us are kind of doing in bits and pieces. That's coordination with different community groups, chamber, special events, things like that, reservations, people reserving, you know, with our new Village Hall, we'll have our community room available again and we're hoping that that gets used quite a lot. So they'll be, you know, showing that space to people, helping set up the room. There's a lot of just kind of this tiny stuff that as it builds up, it takes away from our, you know, ability to move these big projects forward that we really want to see progress on. I think the short term will be, you know, when we list this position, if you approve the job description, we'll be looking for somebody who's a people person, who's really outgoing, that can kind of be the face of the village out at, you know, community bandshell concerts and the parade and showing our, you know, park facilities off to people that might be reserving them or something. So somebody who's going to kind of hopefully also take the load off of Candy who's doing a lot of our social media and so, kind of depends on this person and the skills that they bring, but I think recreation especially as we move into designing the new senior center and figuring out what that active space within their building might look like, if that's something that we want to be sharing with a larger community. When the senior center is not using it, that could be a spot that this person could really grow into and, and help take the lead on that too. So, I think it'll provide much-needed relief for several of us here.
You ready for a motion?
I'll make a motion. Yeah, I just recommend that we follow through on approving this job description and getting Elise in particular, but also other staff members some relief.
Okay. Second, Amanda? All right. Any other discussion? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right, we're on the last item, which is future agenda items. Anybody from the board?
I have a question as my thing here has malfunctioned like three times tonight. What's, what's the timeline on something different?
Well, I have them upstairs right now. But I really wasn't going to put them in place until the April election, but if you guys, the people that aren't up, I can distribute them.
Yeah, mine had a little party tonight. I don't know what happened there.
So they're coming, they're coming. We're just getting everything loaded on to what we need to get loaded on. We'll probably have a, like a meeting all together, maybe like a half hour before the board meeting starts to kind of go through.
Okay, thank you.
Show how we can operate a mission.
Or, you know, get back to where you were when your screen goes playing.
Yeah, there'll be, there'll be a lot more user.
All right, anybody else? All right, let's do, let's do adjournment. All right, second? Amanda? All right. All in favor, we're adjourned. Yeah, Derek?
I just have one quick question on the VAS.